The Board will now come to order. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Present.
Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Ten present, you have quorum.
A quorum being present will be led in opening reflection and prayer by queer and trans community organizer Keith Rose.
Good morning. Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board, neighbors, family. Today is June 28th. It is a very fabulous day and auspicious day. For those who don't know, June 28th marks the 55th anniversary of the first Christopher Street Gay Liberation Day, colloquially known as the Stonewall Riots or the Stonewall Uprising. It was arguably the first time that queer and trans people in the United States stood up and demanded their rights, and it is the reason that this June is Pride Month, celebrated here in St. Louis and around the country. The Stonewall Riots began on this day in Manhattan at the Stonewall Inn, which happens to be the first gay bar that I ever entered. I was 18, underage, and had to flirt my way through the bouncer, but I was determined to go inside and see my history, and I'm so happy to share it with you all here. On this day, people, my ancestors, people we are proud of, some of whom are still with us today, were told that they could not gather, they could not be served alcohol at an establishment in New York. The police raided their bar, as was common at the time, and instead of going away quietly or hiding into the shadows, on that night, people stood up, they rose up, they took to the streets, and they fought for liberation, much like what we saw here in St. Louis 10 years ago. And like Ferguson, it was a watershed moment. We look back on it now fondly, but at the time, it was quite controversial, as you can imagine. Imagine a police raid and then a riot to oppose. If that were to happen today here in St. Louis, which side would you be on? Let us reflect on what it means to be the outside members of society. Let us reflect on where the truth comes from and how long it might take for us to hear it. As we gather here, let us not delude ourselves into thinking that queer liberation is all about rainbows and glitter. It's easy to put a rainbow on your desk or fly a rainbow flag out front. It's hard to do what we actually were called to do by those who rose up 55 years ago. Let us remember that this is the story of pride, that this is the resistance to oppression that is at the heart of the LGBTQ community, and to support that community is to support those values. And so we should be particularly wary of insidious institutions that are eager to appropriate every aspect of queer culture except for our values. For those who will, for the month of June, cover their bad actions with a rainbow veneer and sell us oppression gilded in glitter are no friends to the community. It is important that we understand that the fights that were started 55 years ago remain to this day. It is why, for example, many members of the queer and trans community will be boycotting the Boeing-sponsored Pride this weekend here in downtown. These actions, often referred to as pink washing, are at the heart of the co-op-son of the movement, and so let us reflect on how we can support those who are the torchbearers for those who fought 55 years ago. Let us not be so short-sighted as to celebrate the successes of Stonewall, but speak out against the rowdy queer activists of our own time as they continue that tradition of breaking unjust laws and challenging immoral institutions. As we come together this Pride Month, let us perhaps get over the rainbow and reach for something higher. Let us build the city that our queer ancestors dared to dream. Let us honor the Stonewall activists by prioritizing the issues that they were actually fighting for when they took to the streets. Unrestricted autonomy over our own bodies, a right to privacy in our affairs, the freedom to live outside of binary choices, the end to police violence, a city designed to meet our community's material needs and not merely give them representation. On this, the 28th day of June, let us reflect on our queer and trans ancestors, the sacrifices that they made, the power that they found, the joy that they sparked, and the torches that they have passed on to us. May we keep those torches glowing bright, and may we stick to their original demands. Thank you.
We will, uh, sorry. Alderwoman from the 12th, you are recognized on the suspension of the rules for the introduction of Resolution 87.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I seek unanimous consent to introduce Resolution 87, which is a courtesy resolution regarding a 100-year-old lady in my ward who passed away.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 12th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 87. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer. Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion. Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Thirteen aye votes.
By your vote used to say in the motion of the Alderwoman from the 12th, if you could please place Resolution 87 at the end of the courtesy resolution calendar.
So noted.
With that, we will dispense with our regular order business to take up the courtesy resolution calendar. Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized on Resolution 82, if you and your guests would like to. Come on up.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Today, we're going to be having a small presentation regarding Resolution Number 85, recognizing Purina. Purina, Nestle Purina Pet Care Company, also known as Purina, was founded here in the city of St. Louis in 1894 as a producer of feed for farm animals. And of course, they didn't stop there. That's not all they've done. The company soon developed some of the nation's leading pet food products for cats, dogs, horses, and cattle. Fun fact, the term "kittle" was derived from the style of animal food that Purina produced for dogs, a unique shape and texture with high nutritional value. Purina, of course, doesn't only help cats, but they also invest in the community. Purina Pet Therapy Programs for Kids put pets in the arms of kids who need them most. As of April of this year, Purina Pet Therapy has completed over 12,000 therapy sessions and over 290 hours of volunteer hours to keep teens in need of pet therapy. Aside from pet therapy, Purina has shown up for our St. Louis community. On May 23rd, just last month of this year, Purina held their annual Purina Cares Day, a day for Purina employees to give back to the community that they live and work in. This year, Purina went to La Salle Park, a small neighborhood that you all should know, hopefully, just between Lafayette Square and Soulard, and they really brought out an enormous team to do beautification and neighborhood cleanup, something that was really, really, really meaningful to the community there. Lastly, Purina has been a steadfast and willing partner to help create avenues for those in need. As many of you know, we've talked about it here at the Board, but Purina is a sponsor of Lydia's House, a shelter here in the city of St. Louis that houses women in need of immediate housing as it relates to domestic violence, and they've stood up a housing unit in that facility that accommodates animals, not only financially supporting that, but they actually volunteered manpower and time to install a gate, wired fencing within the existing structure, and built benches where women and children can sit and watch their furry companions in a healthy manner. And it's been an honor to work with the folks at Purina. I've had the honor of just representing Purina for the last year as part of my nine years down here, but I am really, really encouraged by their commitment to the city, their commitment to St. Louis, their commitment to making the world a better place, and really partnering with St. Louis and the surrounding organizations. Ways. They're here today to celebrate their 130th anniversary here in St. Louis, and of course, we're looking forward to the next 130 years. I'd like to recognize some of the folks here with us here for a few words. Mr. Bill Etling, Bill Saltzman, Shirley Lee, Lori Westhoff, Kim Bairdley, Sean McFarland, and my two special guests, Pepper, the smallest one, and Lucy. Bill, would you like to say a few words?
Thank you, and good morning, and thank you to the City of St. Louis Board of Aldermen, to President Green, and to our 8th Ward Alderman, Kara Spencer, for this Board Resolution recognizing Purina's 130 years of service to the St. Louis community. I'm Bill Etling, Senior Vice President of Corporate Affairs for Nestle Purina Pet Care. I'm also a very proud St. Louisan, having grown up in what are now Wards 5 and 2, and having worked in the city practically all of my life. This morning, I'm honored to be here and to represent the more than 2,500 Purina associates, and Pepper, and Lucy, who live in the St. Louis region and work at our pet-friendly Checkerboard Square campus just a few blocks away. And I bring warm greetings from our CEO, Nina Lee Kruger, who unfortunately could not be here today, but asked me to convey her sincere appreciation for this Board Resolution recognizing our contributions to the community. Since our company was founded in 1894 by William H. Danforth, Purina has been proud to call St. Louis our home, and we look forward to at least another 130 years of investing in, growing, and supporting the St. Louis community, where we all live, work, and play with our families, which of course includes our pets. Purina's mission is simple, to enrich the lives of pets and the people who love them. We believe in supporting people and pets in all of the communities where we operate across the United States, whether it's here in St. Louis or in the 23 other cities where we have factories in this country. Here are just a few of the ways Purina has partnered with our St. Louis community through the years. We created a coalition of nonprofits in our near southside neighborhood, and we continue to invest and work with partners, including LifeWise STL, Guardian Angel Settlement Association, Peter and Paul Community Services, and the La Salle Neighborhood Association. We partner with civic organizations like Greater St. Louis Inc. on public safety initiatives, including the Smart City LED Streetlight Project and new safety measures at MetroLink stations, and we've worked with the St. Louis Metropolitan Police Department to install traffic cameras at nearby intersections. We've built solid relationships with Chief Tracy and the Police Department, and Chief Jenkerson and the St. Louis Fire Department, and we have supported their teams in many ways through the years. Purina and our associates have donated more than $1 million to the United Way of Greater St. Louis for each of the past 15 years, and our CEO, Nina Lee, is serving as the United Way Campaign Co-Chair this year. We support national and local domestic violence shelters, which Kara mentioned, such as Lydia's House and the Women's Safe House, to help survivors recover with their families and their pets through our Purple Leash Project. And if pets are involved, there's a good chance Purina will be there. Purina sponsors Pooches in the Ballpark with the St. Louis Cardinals. We partnered with the Blues and Duo Dogs to place Barkley as the first ambassador dog in the National Hockey League, and last year, we became a foundational partner of St. Louis City SC with a goal of creating the most pet-friendly Major League Soccer Club in the country. In addition, we support practically every pet welfare organization in the city and our region. At Purina, we strive to live by the words of our founder almost a century ago when he wrote, "No one of us is as good as all of us." We look forward to working together with all of you and our network of partners to continue helping make St. Louis safe, vibrant, and beautiful for our families, our neighbors, our visitors, and our pets. Thank you.
Any further Alderman from the 10th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Thank you for all the immeasurable ways that you give back to our city, our region, and you all made my day this morning with them. I can't keep running back over there, back and forth, so thank you, thank you, Alderwoman Spencer, for bringing this forward. I would like to ask that we move this in bank.
Second?
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 6th, that we make Resolution Number, looking for the number here, 85 in bank, is 82, 82 in bank. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Alderwoman from the 6th?
I just wanted to say thank you to the Alderwoman from the 8th for bringing this resolution. Fun fact, my first internship was at Purina, so I had a great experience as an inroads intern there and appreciate the work that you do for our community. Also, I know you mentioned the Purple Leash Project. Just wanted to give a special additional shout-out for bringing the first pet shelter for victims of domestic violence in the region, and we do need more of them, so thank you and thank you for being here, and if I could speak bark, I'd thank the Board-legged folks too.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 2nd?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Happy Anniversary, Purina, we appreciate it. You know, often we toil in city government and economic development departments of how do we get the next great business to land in the city? How do we get the new shiny object? But we often don't take time enough to thank those who stay for so long and that contribute to the community in so many ways, like you all do. So, we appreciate you, thank you for staying in St. Louis as long as you have, we hope you're here for another 130 years. Congratulations.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion?
Thank you, Madam President. I just want to take a personal moment here. If anybody here has pets or is interested in checking out the Purina facility, it really is impressive. They're had, you know, the amount of employees that they have working in our city, serving the broader community, and just the energy, the positive energy, and the beautiful campus down there, right south of downtown, is really phenomenal. The amount of pets that you have, if you're having a bad day, let us know. I'd love to join you on a tour, just to feel good about St. Louis and the good work that we're doing down here. I'd like to give a special thanks to Isaiah, who really organized today and made sure that we had accommodations in City Hall for our two furry friends here, and just to really bring some life here, and to Purina, who really does go above and beyond meeting neighborhood groups, nonprofits, and the broader community, asking the question, what can we do to make this part of our city safer, more vibrant, and more collectively productive? With that, I'm really grateful to the Alderwoman from the 10th who asked that we make this in bank, which means, of course, that we'll all join on to recognizing Purina here this morning. Thank you, Madam President.
And thank you again so much to our friends from Purina, including our furry friends from Purina, for coming today. I think we might need to make every Friday Bring Your Dog to Work Day, just given the smiles that are in this room. I'm vetoing the cats because I'm allergic, but I see Alderwoman from the 10th makes a issue with that, understandably so. But thank you so much for your continued investment in St. Louis. 150 years is a great, or sorry, 130 years is a longevity that we don't always see. And so, thank you for coming today, thank you for brightening our day with some furry friends, and we appreciate all of your commitment to St. Louis. And at this time, if we would like to have a picture, we'll please move over onto the steps.
Meeting adjourned. Meeting adjourned. This is right before our first reading. Yeah, right here. This is suspension of the rules to introduce Resolution 87. And it's clerk. So, it says BB1. Scratch all of that and just put Res 86, first reading. Happy Friday.
All right. Got it. And who is, it's Clark Hubbard?
Mm-hmm.
With that, I will, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Looking for Alderwoman from the 10th. All right. Alderman from the 3rd, do you want to do the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar?
Can't hear.
It's on. Oh.
All right, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we adopt the Courtesy Resolution Consent Calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Introduction of Honored Guests, any introduction of honored guests? Alderwoman from the 11th?
Thank you and good morning, Madam Chair, and members of the Board. My honored guests today are all of the kid entrepreneurs in our city. The 11th Ward has three kid entrepreneurs. We have a Lemonade, Stan Henrietta's Lemonade, there's another young lady, her name always escapes me, she does snow cones, and then we have Jamari, who has Jamari Q's Barbecue. And so, I am just in awe of how these young people have a dream, or they have a goal for something that they want to achieve, and I also salute all of the people who support those children in doing positive things here in our city.
Any further introduction of honored guests? Any further introduction of honored guests? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the approval of the minutes from Friday, June 21st, 2024.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move that we approve the minutes from Friday, June 21st, 2024.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we approve it from Friday, June 21st, 2024. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Report of city officials?
Report of city officials can be found in A, B, and C of the agenda and has been placed in a Google Drive for your review. Dear members of the Board, I have the pleasure to submit the following individual for appointment to the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Commission, the appointment of Mr. Richard Callow. I respectfully request your approval of this appointment sincerely to Sharla O. Jones, Mayor.
Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointment to the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Commission.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. I move to send this to the Transportation and Commerce Committee.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 8th, that we move Mayor Jones' appointment to the Metropolitan Taxi Cab Commission, to the Transportation and Commerce Committee. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Anyone wish to take any bills or resolutions off of any of our informal calendars? Seeing none, first reading of board bills.
Board Bill 59, sponsored by Alderwoman Keys, in ordinance authorizing and directing the mayor, the comptroller of the city of St. Louis to execute upon receipt of and in consideration of the sum of $10 and other good and valuable consideration of quitclaim deed to remise, release, and forever quitclaim until Bethlehem Missionary Baptist Church certain city-owned property located in City Block 1883, which property is numbered as 3509 Cousins Avenue in the city of St. Louis, Missouri, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 60, sponsored by Alderman Orion, in ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis, a proposed amendment to the Charter of the city of St. Louis, amending Article 8, Section 1, to provide for the city councilor to be nominated by the mayor and approved by the Board of Aldermen by a majority vote, providing for a process of removal of the city councilor, either by mayoral action or by two-thirds vote of Board of Aldermen, providing for an election to be held for voting on the proposed amendment and for the manner of voting, and for the publication, certification, deposit, and recording of this ordinance containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 61, sponsored by Alderman Browning, in ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the city of St. Louis, a proposal to amend Article 13 of the Charter of the city of St. Louis to create a Department of Transportation. Board Bill 62, sponsored by Alderwoman Tyus, an ordinance pertaining to income which is exempt from the city earnings tax. exempt from the city earnings tax, repealing ordinance numbers 65094 and 64586, removing an exemption on any income received by a person in the form or related to the grant, vesting, or exercise of stock options, performing shares, or performing based stock-related incentive plans from the city earnings tax containing the emergency clause. Board Bill 63, sponsored by Alderwoman Velazquez, an ordinance repealing Section 2 of ordinance number 70259, codified in Chapter 3.06.320 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, replacing it with a new section providing for the clerk of the Board of Aldermen to record Board of Aldermen votes on board bills and non-courtesy resolutions, requiring those votes to be published on the city website, and providing for specific requirements for those records containing an effective date. Board Bill 64, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, to calm the flow of traffic on the 54 through 5700 blocks of St. Louis Avenue, the 4400 block of Arlington Avenue, and the 45 through the 4900 block of Emerson Avenue. That is the extent of First Rena Board Bills.
Reference to Committee of Board Bills.
To the HUD Committee, Board Bill 59, to legislation. Board Bill 60, 61, and 63. To the Budget Committee, Board Bill 62, and Public Infrastructure, Board Bill 64. That's the extent of reference to Committee of Board Bills.
Second reading and report of standing committees.
The following board bill was reported out of Transportation and Commerce with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Cone, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,175,000 as described in Section 94.600 through 94.655, revised statutes of Missouri 2000, as amended for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes, containing the severability and an emergency clause. The following board bill was reported out of HUD's committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 41, committee sub as amended, sponsored by Alderman Orion, Alderwoman Sanye, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the City of St. Louis on November 5th, 2024, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis, supposed to impose a 3% fee on short-term rental units within the City of St. Louis which are operating pursuant to City of St. Louis ordinance 71729. The following board bill was reported out of Public Infrastructure with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance establishing various stop sites at the intersections throughout the First Ward, regulating all traffic traveling on streets meeting at such intersection throughout the First Ward, containing an emergency clause. The following board bills were reported out of the Public Safety Committee with a due pass recommendation. Board Bill 11, committee sub as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanye, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Keys, Alderman Aldridge, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Orion. An ordinance that amends Title 16 of the City of St. Louis Revised Code of Ordinance to add a chapter stating for regulations for attorneys who access and enter city correctional and detention facilities when visiting with persons who are detained therein, containing the severability and an emergency clause. Board Bill 12, committee sub as amended, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, Alderwoman Sanye, Alderman Orion, and Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. An ordinance that authorized certain persons to access and enter correctional and detention facilities for the purpose of oversight, transparency, accountability, and accountability, the ability to access city facilities that are maintained by the Division of Corrections is intended to be codified under Chapter 16.12 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis. That's the extent of second reading, report of standing committees.
Madam Clerk, if you could please make sure I'm listed as a cosponsor on 56, 41, committee substitute as amended, 11 committee substitute as amended, and 12 committee substitute as amended.
So noted.
Thank you. Alderperson from the 3rd, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bills 55 and 56 to the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bill 55 and 56 to the Perfection Consent Calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 3rd, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bills 55 and 56 to the regular Perfection Consent Calendar. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderman Cone.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge. President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderwoman Boyd. 14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion of the Alderman 14th. If you could please place Board Bills 55 and 56 at the end of the Perfection Consent Calendar.
So noted.
Alderperson from the 14th, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bills 41, committee substitute as amended, 11 substitute as amended, 12 committee substitute as amended, to the regular perfection calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to suspend the rules to move Board Bill 41, committee substitute as amended, Board Bill Number 11, committee substitute as amended, and Board Bill 12, committee substitute as amended, to the perfection calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderman from the 4th, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of moving Board Bills 41, committee substitute as amended, 11 substitute as amended, and 12 committee substitute as amended, to the regular perfection calendar. This is a non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Cone. Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer. Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer. Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Cone. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
14 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderperson from the 14th. If you could please place Board Bills 41, committee substitute as amended, 11 committee substitute as amended, and 12 committee substitute as amended, at the end of the regular perfection calendar.
So noted.
Report of special committees.
We have none.
And dispense with line item 15. Board bills for perfection consent.
Board Bill 25, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Oldenburg, pursuant to ordinance number 70333, as amended by ordinance number 71394, an ordinance directing the director of streets to install speed humps to calm the flow of traffic on the 5800 block of Lauren Avenue, 5300 block of Alfred Avenue, 5300 block of Gilson Avenue, the 8000 block of Wanda Avenue, 4900 block of Nagel Avenue, 5600 block of Holly Hills Avenue, and the 6400 block of Murdoch Avenue. Board Bill 36, sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, an ordinance repealing Chapter 11.28 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis pertaining to abortion by repealing Section 11.28.010 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10 of ordinance number 56729, codified in Sections 11.28.010, 11.28.020, 11.28.030, 11.28.040, 11.28.050, 11.28.060, 11.28.070, 11.28.080, 11.28.090, and 11.28.100 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15 of ordinance number 56579. Board Bill 51, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Keys, and Alderman Aldridge. An ordinance repealing ordinance number 5, I'm sorry, 69955, codified as Chapter 3.110120 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, and in lieu thereof enacting a new ordinance relating to the complete street policy for the City of St. Louis relating to the standards and guiding principles for planning, designing, construction, construction, or reconstruction of any public right of way to considered all users, containing provisions for contractors and utilities relating to the blocking or closure of the public right of way containing the severability clause. Board Bill 53, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanye, an ordinance establishing a four-way stop site at various sections in the 7th Ward to regulate all traffic traveling in all directions containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 55, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, an ordinance establishing various stop sites at the intersection throughout the First Ward, regulating all traffic traveling on streets meeting at such intersection throughout the First Ward, containing an emergency clause. Board Bill 56, sponsored by Alderman Cone and President Green, an ordinance appropriating the sum of $25,175,000 as described in Section 94.600 through 94.655, revised statutes of Missouri 2000, as amended for the period of July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, which sum is hereby appropriated out of the Transportation Trust Fund to the Bi-State Development Agency for transportation purposes containing the severability clause and an emergency clause. That's the extent of Perfection Consent Calendar.
Alderwoman from the 7th.
Madam President.
I, I'm gonna go to her hand, then yours, then Alderman Aldridge. Alderwoman from the 7th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I just wanted to request to be added as a cosponsor to Complete Streets by Alderwoman Switzer.
That is Board Bill 51 as amended. Madam Clerk, if you could please make note of that and also add me as a cosponsor as well.
So noted.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, I'd ask that Board Bill 36 be taken off of the consent calendar and placed on the regular perfection calendar, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor of Board Bill 36.
Board Bill, which number?
36.
36. Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 6th.
Make sure that I'm listed as a cosponsor on Board Bill 55. I don't see it on here, but I have, oh, it is? Okay, thank you.
Alderwoman from the 11th.
I'd like to be added as a cosponsor on Board Bill Number 36.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 4th.
Thank, thank, thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor to Board Bill Number 51 as amended.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 13th.
But I just wanted to ask a sponsor question. Didn't we in the Health Committee ask to be cosponsors for this bill?
Alderwoman, Board Bill 36 has been moved to the regular perfection calendar.
Okay, well, just add me as a sponsor, because I thought we did.
Okay. If you could please add Alderwoman from the 13th as a sponsor to Board Bill 36, and if you would add me as well, I would appreciate it.
So noted.
Any further requests to be at Alderwoman from the 7th, is your backup?
Thank you, it is. Thank you, Madam President. May you please add me as a cosponsor to Board Bill 36 as well?
Madam Clerk, please make note of that.
So noted.
Any further? Alderwoman from the 10th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Please add me, I know you all, please add me to 36 and 51.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 6th.
Can you, Madam Clerk, can you please add me to 36 as well? Thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. And the Alderman from the 5th is out of here. All right, any further additions? All right, seeing none. Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to adopt the board bills for the Perfection Consent Calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the board bills for perfection consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderperson from the 1st, that we adopt the board bills for the perfection consent calendar. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Board bills for perfection.
Board Bill 30, as amended, sponsored by Alderman Aldridge, Alderman Orion, Alderwoman Velazquez, an ordinance submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis, a proposal to change Article 16, Section 3 of the Charter of the City of St. Louis to permit the Board of Aldermen to increase the amount of any item in the appropriation proposed in the city's annual budget ordinance except amounts fixed by the statute or for the payment of principal or interest of the city debt, or for meeting any ordinance obligations, calling for an election for voting on said change in the matter of voting, I'm sorry, and the election of the publication and certification of the Missouri Constitution containing an emergency clause.
Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 30 as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 30 as amended.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 30 as amended. Alder.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board of, of the board. Board Bill 30 as amended is one of the charter changes that ideas that come from the Charter Commission that this Board of Aldermen passed last session to set up the charter and was sent to the ballot. The Charter Commission has been working very diligently to look at our charter to try to figure out different ways to update it. And this amendment, I think, is a very simple one, and after getting a history lesson from the Alderwoman from the 12th and our clerk, Mr. Kennedy, the board at once upon a time had a little bit more power when it comes to our budget. But right now, as it stands, the Board of Aldermen only has the power to decrease the Board of Aldermen, I mean, decrease the budget. So what this will do is allow for the Board of Aldermen to have the ability to not just decrease, but increase. And when there is a decrease, the decreased amount must be in the same equal of the increased amount, to make sure that the budget is balanced. So if we wanted to take away $200,000 from streets and put it in refuse, that $200,000 would have to be decreased, but that increase would have to be the same amount of refuse. But again, this is giving the board a little bit more power. Right now, we only can make recommendations by increasing budget, which over the last two years being on budget, luckily, we've been able to get those recommendations without really having authority to increase. Other cities do it, Kansas City, or other, yeah, other cities do it. Kansas City Council has the ability to increase. St. Louis County has the ability to increase. On the state level, they have the ability to increase, but this is kind of an archaic system that we have right now, the city, where we do not have the ability to increase but only decrease. This would be a charter change that would go to the ballot, in the November ballot that would be followed with other charter amendments. And with that, I would close and open up for any questions.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 14th with yield, please.
The Alderman from the 14th yields questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Absolutely.
You may proceed.
Thank you. You did talk to me about it, and I'm supportive of this bill, but I did think of one question. So if the Budget Committee and then ultimately the Board of Aldermen increases, will then it have to, the budget will have to go back before E&amp;A and for them to approve it before we proceed, or will it be an automatic increase?
No, yes, ma'am. So if, so like what we did this session, I had some amendments where I decreased from the jail and I put in money for Circuit Attorney Gabe Gore's office. So all the amendments, myself and the- So all the amendments, uh, myself and the Chairwoman from the 8th and Alderwoman from, or from the 10th, old 8th Ward and the 7th Ward, um, or the 8th, I can't remember, Alderwoman Spencer, uh, all those changes that we made for the increasing, 8th, okay. Uh, or maybe the old numbers, 10, I can't, yeah, anyhow. Oh, power 10, that ain't, that ain't, okay. Anywho, uh, yes, so to your question though, because I'm getting carried away. Yes, those increases will have to go back to E and A. And then E and A will have to either agree to, uh, take those board, uh, changes or say we not, uh, and then if they do take the changes like now, the Board of Aldermen will have to, uh, once E and A accepts it, the Board of Aldermen will have to, uh, perfect it and then third reading, uh, third read it and then try to send it back to, uh, the mayor's desk by Ja- July 1st.
So, now, you talked a lot, so let me just-
I know, I was telling it with all these, 8, 10, 8-
Okay, so I want to make sure. So let's just say the Board of E and A said, and two people said, no, we don't agree with this. Then what could, what could we still just leave it in there and then send our budget? And if it got line item, or if it's got vetoed, then we could override? Is that correct? Is that how you perceive, how you-
I would, the way I perceive it is that even if we made an increase and E and A said no, if we didn't have the votes, they would send back the budget that had no. So, um, maybe later down the line, we probably should be putting in more, uh, and this is one of the charter changes, tighter language that forces E and A to actually accept the Board of Aldermen's increase and decrease.
Right now, this doesn't do that, that's what I'm saying.
It just allow us to make an increase because right now, we only can make recommendations that we send to E and A, but not actually, uh, an amendment.
So just to let you know, that's still just a recommendation, okay? Whereas we actually have power to cut. Um, so that's what I wanted to make sure it's still, until we actually have that power to increase and then take it, it's a little bit more, but it's not to the same power as when we actually have power to cut. All right, thank you.
And, and really quick, I do know in the bill, which that will be some entry, in the bill, it does say, uh, E and A shall take the increase.
But we can't force E and A to vote anyway because they have their own individual power. So I still would support the bill because you, I told you, you take baby steps sometime to where you're getting.
Absolutely.
Ultimately, you get to where you have that power.
Definitely. Thank you, Alderwoman.
Alderwoman from the 7th? And then I'll go to Alderman from the 2nd.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Um, I just want to thank the Alderman from the 14th for his work on this bill, and I would like to request to be added as co-sponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 2nd?
Thank you, Madam President. Will the Alderman from the 14th yield for questions?
The Alderman from the 14th yields questioning from the Alderman from the 2nd?
Absolutely.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Alderman, um, was this bill discussed with the Budget Director? And would you say that he opined favorably to it? And I ask that simply, just to give you some context, because the Budget Director's been at, been the architect of the budget for a lot of years now and sort of keeps the chaos and the, uh, noise pretty well bracketed. So I just would, would be curious to understand what his opinion was of this legislative.
No problem, and it's also always on YouTube for people to go back and watch. So the Budget Director was there the second meeting at the request of the Chair to be there. We also had, um, the Chair of the Charter Commission, uh, Chairwoman Bobo, and also Vice Chair Sheridan, who agreed on this charter amendment to move it. Um, I would say that, uh, the Budget Director opinion was by us having an increased authority, we have less power to compromise. And, uh, I would say he probably wasn't favorable. I think he likes the way the system is. Um, again, though, it's only giving the Board the ability to, as you sit on budget the last two years, it only allows us to continue to do the process instead of saying we make a recommendation for increase. We actually will have an amendment. Um, so I believe the Budget Director, while I respect him a lot, he does great work for our budget. I do also think he was speaking from a, uh, uh, he is represented by E and A, and this probably isn't the, uh, one of the recommendations they would love to see to give this Board more power. Um, but he was not, I would say, super favorable for it because he believed we wouldn't have compromise, which I still think at the end of the day, if we make an increase, we still have to have, or decrease, you still have to go and talk to the Comptroller, the President Board of Aldermen, and the Mayor.
Thank you, Alderman. No further questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Madam Clerk, if you could also add me as a co-sponsor? Uh, Alderman for the 14th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. I've moved to close.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderperson from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill number 30 as amended. Uh, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer?
Aye.
Alderman Aldenberg?
And, uh, Felina Gay.
I'm sorry, Alderman, I didn't hear. Thank you. Alderman Cohn? Alderman Orion?
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer?
Oh.
Alderwoman Velazquez?
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanye?
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer?
Aye.
Alderman Browning? Alderwoman Clerk Hubbard?
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys?
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus?
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd?
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich?
Aye.
President Green?
Aye.
Alderman Cohn?
Aye.
14, aye votes and one no vote.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the 14th to perfect Board Bill 30 as amended.
Board Bill 41, Committee Sub, sponsored by Alderman Orion, President Green, Alderwoman Sanye, and Alderman Aldrich.
Alderman from the 4th, you are-
I'm sorry. President Green, I was reading the summary, I'm sorry.
Okay.
An ordinance calling and providing for the holding of an election in the City of St. Louis on November 5th, 2024, for the purpose of submitting to the qualified voters of the City of St. Louis a proposal to impose 3% fee on short-term rental units within the City of St. Louis, which are operating pursuant to City Ordinance 7179.
Alderman from the 4th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 41 Committee Substitute.
Thank you, Madam President. I move that we perfect Board Bill number 41 Committee Substitute as amended.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the Alderman from the 4th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 1st, that we perfect Board Bill number 41 Committee Substitute. Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. Uh, as the clerk noted, Board Bill 41, uh, asks voters to approve a 3% fee on the nightly room rate of short-term rentals. Uh, if this is approved, 50% of the proceeds will go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. The remaining proceeds will go to other housing initiatives such as tenant relocation services. This tax is actually still lower than the, the, the taxes on hotels. Uh, we, we had three committee hearings on this. Um, we had a lot of input, both from the general public as well as the license collector and members of the committee. Um, I think we, we found kind of a, a sweet spot here. Initially, we were looking at a, a flat rate per room, things like that. Uh, and we, we settled on this, uh, 3% uh, as a result of both the ease of operations and collecting it and the fact that, uh, larger, uh, short-term rentals would be, uh, the, the, the tax would essentially scale with, uh, those, uh, larger, uh, short-term rentals. Uh, the fee is going to be collected by, by the license collector, uh, other than Airbnb, who has a voluntary agreement that they, they collect this and remit it. Um, if, if this is passed by the voters, uh, other, the other short-term rental legislation that we, uh, we passed out of this, this Board last session, uh, then Board Bill 33 and 34 are, uh, coming effective in November 2024 with a, a hard deadline of May 2025. So this tax being implemented will line up right with that. So we should, uh, also have better data on, uh, you know, how, how many, uh, short-term rentals there are operating in the city as well as the, the, the kind of drawn-out permitting process that we discussed, uh, last session. I think that this is, uh, given this morning's news, uh, out of the Supreme Court, I think that this is even more important now, uh, that the Supreme Court has essentially told the most vulnerable populations in every city to, to essentially go be homeless somewhere else. Um, the, the, uh, fact of the matter here is that this is not going to, it's not a silver bullet in, in solving, uh, the, the homelessness issue that, that we and many, many other cities are facing. But this, uh, will allow for some funding for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund. And my hope is that we can, uh, build more affordable housing. As I talked about in committee, housing is essentially a zero-sum game. Every house that's taken off of the market, uh, to become a short-term rental is a house that a, a family or a member of our community cannot live in full-time. We heard, uh, in, in committee, uh, from several of the operators themselves that, uh, essentially these, th- their short-term rentals were very busy and booked throughout the summer, but in the winter time, they, they sat vacant. Um, and they, they, they were not getting the bookings that they, they wanted throughout the winter. Uh, I find that ironic because that is the exact same time that as a city, every year, we are struggling to provide shelter for people so that they don't literally freeze to death. Um, and we, we have people taking houses off the market, um, to, that, that are sitting unused during those same months. Um, this, you know, this is a, a, a simple supply and demand issue. I'm not blaming short-term rental operators for, uh, homelessness. I, I, I said in the committee hearings, when, when I go on vacations, I often stay in short-term rentals. I'm not opposed to them. Uh, many people wanted us to, to ban short-term rentals, uh, last session. Uh, a- a- as a, a Board, we did not do that. I think regulating them makes sense. I, I think a ban on them does not. But, uh, along with regulation, often comes taxation. And we, I think we would have imposed a tax at that time other than, uh, as a result of Hancock, uh, which is, you know, a magic word to slow things down around here. Uh, we must put this forward to the voters. And, uh, I trust the voters of the City of St. Louis. And, uh, i- should they say, hey, we don't want to pay a 3% tax on short-term rentals? That's their prerogative. But keep in mind that for a $1,000 stay at a short-term rental, so whether that's a big house for, you know, the night or whether that's a, a, a week of renting a room somewhere, for that $1,000 stay, what we're actually taxing the end user as a result of this is $30. Um, so it's not a, a gargantuan ask here. And again, that money is going directly to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund and impacted tenants. Uh, and with that, I, uh, am happy to, to discuss this with anyone, and I ask for your favorable consideration.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the 14th?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the Board. With the Alderman from the 4th yield for questions?
The Alderman from the 4th yields questioning from the Alderman from the 14th?
Absolutely.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Alderman. Uh, also, I want to, uh, thank you on your, your work on this. I know you've kind of been the short-term rental advocate from last session to this session.
I've learned more about short-term rent than I ever wanted to.
Yeah, um, and I know there was, uh, three hearings on this because several people in HUDs had, uh, questions. I know you made some changes to actually try to, uh, accommodate some of those concerns. I know it started at one point as, um, what was it? Like a flat fee of $5 per occupied room?
At first, we had an occupied, yeah, the, uh, there was a, a flat fee for, you know, the short-term rental, just as, in general. And then we went to per occupied room and ultimately settled on this 3% as a result of conversations, both with, uh, the platforms themselves, operators, committee members, the license collector. Um, this, this seems to be both the sweet spot in terms of the price as well as the, uh, the operational ability to, to collect those funds.
And I was, uh, um, and actually, me and you both was in another meeting at the time where the license collector came to the committee. But I know she was coming to testify, uh, because one of her questions was about like operations concern. Could you elaborate, like, can the license collector office, do they have the ability and, um, manpower to actually make this happen?
Sure, sure. And yes, the, the, uh, and I'll, I'll apologize to the license collector. Uh, she did come at the beginning of the hearing, and, uh, we were going through the disparity study, I believe, at that time. And so the, the hearing, the Board Bill didn't come up for discussion for about an hour after the beginning of the hearing. And at that time, she had a, another engagement. She did leave written testimony, uh, for the committee. And, uh, quite frankly, she says that she has the capacity to do this. And in the event that she does not have the capacity to do this, that it would take one additional, uh, person in her office. Uh, that's in the fiscal note, uh, of this bill as well that, uh, our, our financial analyst, Ryan Coleman, prepared.
Got you. Like I said, I do support the bill, uh, a co-sponsor on the bill. Uh, I think this is a, a good step forward. I'm nervous for all of these to be on the November ballot. I think between this one and the charter changes, I mean, I want to see this get done. And I think we just got so much, uh, important things on November ballot. Abortion, sports betting. I would hate for this to get, uh, watered down where right after November, we'll be coming back in January to do it all over again to try to put it on the, maybe April ballot. But up to your discretion to put it on there. Um, only comment that I will say, I know, and, and I say to the committee, you know, I think it's a lot of, you know, we're, we're pinning, uh, you know, like the short-term rental individuals, uh, and advocates who are advocating for affordable housing and the impact attendance fund, which I totally, uh, agree, we need to have more money in affordable housing. I think Commissioner or Director Ford Griffin is doing an amazing job with utilizing those funds to bring more affordable housing as well as the legislation we passed for impact attendance fund. I think is a good step. I will say, um, you know, just some of the comments that you mentioned of how some of these homes sit vacant and we have unhoused problem, you know, I will push back and say we do. But we also have an issue with our shelters in general being, uh, occupied in full during these months. And we've seen that, uh, during the winter time of that we just don't have bed space for our unhoused individuals. So I would be pushed back a little bit to like, say, a lot of these short-term rentals are taking up space also for affordable housing, like I also said in committee. I think, you know, when you look at North St. Louis, you're talking about decades and decades of disinvestment. Um, this just didn't come because of Airbnb or Villa or Expedia. Um, I think if we can get kind of past, uh, the finger pointing, because I think a lot of the conversations have made it seem like the affordable housing people, I mean, not affordable housing, the short-term rental Airbnbs and all those folks are like the bad guys. Um, and I think they provide a service. I think we made some changes last year with your Bill 33 and 34 to regulate them a little more because they are out of hand in downtown and, and other spots where these owners are just letting these parties get out of whack in the communities. And I think this is another step that doesn't, uh, punish the owner, but this would be a user fee. However, uh, I'm glad to see this money going to affordable housing. I don't, you know, it won't be enough. So I don't want us to sell this kind of dream that this is going to fix our affordable housing. Um, but I do think it's a good start, and I do respect all the work that you put into this But I do think it's a good start and I do respect all the work that you put into this because I know it got slowed down because your colleagues had questions on it. And I appreciate you actually working with everybody to try to make it. It's not perfect, as you always say, everyone don't get everything, but I think this is a good bill that we can continue to grow from.
No, thank you, Alderman. And, you know, I think that's, that's what committee is for. We had three hearings on this. It came out unanimously of committee with every committee signing on as a co-sponsor. I do find it funny, as you noted, that, that, you know, it seemed like in the committee hearing that people were, members of the community seemed like they were pitted against each other and that, that in my estimation couldn't be further from the truth. As you noted, we've seen disinvestment parts of our city for many, many years that certainly predate short-term rentals. I do find it kind of amusing that last session, I was a shill for short-term rentals that was, you know, clearly in the pocket of short-term rentals. In this session, apparently I'm trying to kill all the short-term rentals with the tax. This is simply just an industry that needs to be regulated and taxed like many other industries. I think when, when you engage in commerce, government can, can tax it. And I think there is a nexus between the proliferation of short-term rentals and a lack of affordable housing that does contribute, as you, as you mentioned, to the lack of shelter space that we see in the winter. Because, you know, like I said, housing is a zero-sum game. If those individuals in the shelter were instead in a, in a home that they could afford, then we would have more shelter space.
I would, I would push back on that. I think we as a city, we're not doing a great job with, even if those homes came open, and I know we're getting off a little bit, but even if those homes became open, doesn't mean that they can be shelter spaces. And I know that-
Oh, no, no, not shelter spaces. I'm not saying that they would be shelter spaces. I'm saying if people could afford to live in a house, many of them would not need to be in a shelter. It's just that some, the, there are many people who are even working, who cannot afford rent or a mortgage. And there's a simple supply and demand issue with, with housing stock like anything else. And when there's, when there's less of it, prices are higher. And as we noted, we're seeing more and more houses becoming short-term rentals and people are, as we heard in committee, many of these short-term rental operators own not, not just one short-term rental, but many short-term rentals. We heard that last session and again this session. And, and as I noted, each one of those houses that becomes a short-term rental is now a house that a member of our community can't live in full-time.
Yeah. And I would just say again, I think we're not, as a city, prioritizing our unhoused and looking at how we do transitional housing. Plenty of legislations that'll be coming down the pipeline of how to make it easier to open maybe shelters or if not large congregation shelters, because I got a lot in my ward, even just small ones. So I think it's, it's a multilayer issue than just saying-
Oh, sure, sure. Yeah, no, this is-
Because somebody has a Airbnb, you know, they're taken away or that housing could be used as a house for somebody who may be in a shelter to move in. Because there's a lot to that. I mean, people that are in shelters may have mental health issues. I mean, social workers-
Absolutely.
-able to save up, to be able to, you know, get transportation and housing. So again, I just, I think we're doing a lot of, and we're getting off the weeds of the bill.
Well, and, and I think we're agreeing with each other.
Yeah. And I also will push back and say it's not a tax. It's a user fee for the users. So it's not a, it's a fee, not a tax, correct?
Sure. Yep.
I think that's all I got.
All right.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the 4th would yield?
The Alderman from the 4th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th.
Absolutely.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Alderman, I heard you talk about, and I'm glad that the Alderman 14th made that clear because I was going to ask the exact same question. This is not, everybody in the city of St. Louis will be paying this taxes. This is a user fee. When you use short-term rental-
Exactly.
-it'll be just like if you go to a hotel, there will be a fee that's a-
And in fact, it's less than the fee that you would pay for the vast majority of the hotels in the city.
Right. And I heard you say that some of the money would be going to the Affordable Housing Commission?
At least half of the money generated has to go to the Affordable Housing Trust Fund.
Will any of the money be going, going to some kind of security or security force? Because what I understand, what I hear from people a lot of times about short-term rental is that since we already are very short of police, there's no security in the building or in the area when something is going on. So has that been considered at all?
So that wasn't considered in this bill. I think where security really came into play was the discussions with 33 and 34, where we have that permitting process and then the revocation of those permits if there's issues. This was to, the purpose of this bill was more to address the, the idea that we've seen a proliferation of these short-term rentals. And as more and more of them come online, there's just a, it's just a fact that there's less houses for people to live in. We, we have a housing crisis all throughout this country right now. And this will hopefully be a drop in the bucket of solving that issue.
So where would the other funds be used then if they're going to be used partly with-
So the rest go to the impacted tenant fund and other, you know, housing-related?
Okay, so impacted tenant who had to be removed or is there, you know, because where I've been hearing it from is from the landlord end in that you rent out these short-term rentals and then they turn into party houses, okay?
Yes.
And when somebody, something turns into a party house, you can be impacted as a landlord a lot in which you didn't expect. So is it just for the tenants who, and if it is, why is it for the tenants? Because-
This, to be clear, this is not the tenants who occupy the short-term rental.
The other tenants.
It's citywide-
Okay.
-tenants who are impacted by a need to, say, relocate or, you know, for the Affordable Housing Trust Fund to build more affordable housing in this, for tenants that, that are forced to relocate through, through no fault of their own. Sometimes there's like a mold issue or a vermin issue in a house and a judge says, hey, you know, this is essentially constructive eviction, but that, that individual may not have the three months rent that they need to sign a new lease. And so really through no fault of their own, they, they're basically forced out onto the streets. This, this fund would, would help that. It's trying to prevent people from losing shelter in the first place.
Well, you do know with constructive conviction, the tenants actually can come back if the landlord has not done what they're supposed to do.
Absolutely.
And recruit not only their, their deposit, but they also can recruit damages if they are forced to move because it's something now, if it's something that is beyond nature, then you don't, you can't necessarily do that because landlord doesn't have any control. But it is your responsibility as a landlord to keep your house habitable so that people can live in it in a decent sanitary way.
Absolutely.
Right. I also heard that you said about that the short-term rental people were kind of complaining that in the winter, that they were empty a lot?
That, that's some of the testimony that we heard in, in committee from short-term rental operators. They said, as they were lamenting the fact that their property was being taxed under the commercial rate rather than the residential rate, they said, well, we're, we're being taxed commercially even though half the time, you know, essentially bookings are thriving in the summertime and in the wintertime, oftentimes the property sits-
But isn't that a case with businesses in general? Sometimes your businesses thrive and sometimes they don't?
As a business owner in, in my, my, my previous life, I can say, yeah, sometimes business is slow, sometimes it's booming.
But you're still commercial and or residential depending on what you started out to be. Is that not correct?
I know that any parcel of commercial real estate that I have operated out of the tax entity did not care whether business was low.
So my other question is, when they're talking about that they have these absences, maybe I'm missing something here. Is there something that prevents them from renting? Do you have to just rent for two months or two weeks or whatever the term? Could you say, I'm going to do a six-months? Wanted to ensure-
Sure. And if, if you're doing six-month leases, none of this legislation applies to you. This is for, specifically for people staying in places for less than a 30-day period.
Right. I'm just saying, because I know a lot of people who travel and sometimes they come to a city and they have to stay for a long time. And it would seem like, and I don't know if they've tried to coordinate with, with some of the businesses like Ross and Karina, people that are here, but when people travel, they need to stay in, my husband used to travel in Green Energy for a lot. And so he stayed, he had a place for six months or sometimes they rented four years his company because they came back and forth as they were doing business. So-
Yeah. And in my neighborhood, we were in close proximity to, to the hospitals. And so we get a lot of traveling nurses, for example, that their contract may be two months.
Right.
And so they can either stay in a, book a short-term rental or oftentimes with, with these, currently, they'll essentially work a deal out with the landlord well in advance and say, hey, even though you operate this as a short-term rental, I'm going to be there for three months, can you give me a rate for, for that period of time? And, and then, you know, a lot of this just wouldn't apply.
And I was going to just suggest, because I always thought they overbuilt downtown. They took a lot of money that should have been in North St. Louis and they overbuilt it and they put a lot of rentals and things. And then they, then people were like, oh my God. And then of course people are going to try to rent their spaces. So I would love to see that somehow we help the people who have ended up with these things with something to try to match them with businesses or things like that in which people travel and said, hey, the nurse, like you said, the Nurses Association or people who in sales or something like that. So maybe they could get a more stable crowd. I think the whole problem has been with short-term rental. We seem to have changed places with a couple of alderpeople here, I'm sorry.
The Alderman from the 3rd looks different.
Very. And so the 11th, they look very different now. But so if we could maybe look at maybe using a little of that fee or something else to kind of match people, because it ends up being that the people who are transitional or who just rent them and really don't tell you the truth. And they've done that in hotels for years. And I would say when we were in college, some people rented hotels in college because that's where you could have a party and then you could leave. So maybe if we could help them some by matching them up with people that travel that are more stable, you might end up having a more stable population downtown. Because I just really do, I always said that for years that you're putting too much in rental and you took too much of block rent. They should have been used in North St. Louis in which it was originally applied for. If you look at all the old block grant applications, they talked about the eels and then they didn't do what was, they were so busy building up downtown and so you overbuild. And of course, people are going to try to rent their spaces because they're responsible for the mortgage. So I would like to see that we can maybe help people some kind of way to match up with better tenants. And that's what I also said with the whole thing about providing people with attorneys. The money would be much better used if we had a group of law clerks or things that would help them go look for apartments and teach them how to, and look at their leases before they sign them.
You, you and I agree there, you know?
Right.
It'd be great to have legal counsel for people before they got into a problem.
Exactly. All right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Definitely.
Alderwoman from the 8th.
Thank you, Madam President. Members of the board, with the Alderman from the 4th yield.
The Alderman for the 4th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 8th.
I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed. And please talk into the mic.
Thank you, Madam President. I'm still getting used to these numbers. I want to call you the Alderman from the 24th, which I believe-
I, I'd still respond.
There you go. Thank you. Alderman, I, I thank you for your work on the short-term rentals over the last couple of years as you, I think you got, you know, there was a lot of discussion about your previous bill, certainly some discussion about this bill. And I have a couple of questions because I've gotten a lot of feedback from folks. I think there is, as you mentioned, some general confusion about the bill itself. And we talked a little bit about it with the Alderman from the 12th. Is there any, do you know what the potential generated revenue from short-term rentals is going to be?
So that, that number is actually really hard to estimate right now for, for two reasons. One, as a result of the idea that we haven't regulated this in the past, we simply don't have a good number of how many short-term rentals there are out there. We, we can look on any given day how many are listed, but, you know, the, the listings fluctuate. And then when we, when Board Bill 33 and 34 come into effect and there's the, the permitting process and people have to have the, the correct permits to be listed on the, on the various websites, we, we don't have a good idea at the moment of exactly how many of them are going to clear all those hurdles.
Board Bills 33 and 34 from last session. You said when they, when those bills come online, do you know when that's going to be?
Sure. So November 2024 is the effective date of 33 and 34. There's a hard deadline. There's going to be a bit of a grace period for people to, to get into compliance with 33 and 34. But that hard deadline is going to be May of 2025.
So does November 2024, when Board Bills 33 and 34 come online, will be about one year after passing regulatory bill here at the Board of Aldermen? Is that right?
That's correct. And that, that was at, at the request of the Ben Building Commissioner, that we, we give the Building Division some time to generate the third-party contracts that they needed to enter into in order to, to work through the process.
Thank you, Alderman. Do you know if we've given them the tools they need? Do they have a, as a result of this new regulation, have they gotten additional funding, additional staff?
So in-
Application on that front to make it feasible to put into place Board Bills 33 and 34?
So the, I, I think we're, we're getting a little bit off topic here, but 33 and 34 have, the, the fees generated from 33 and 34 fund 33 and 34 essentially.
But we haven't generated any fees from 33 and 34? Is that correct?
No. And hence that, that six-month ramp-up period for people to come into compliance with that. Because as we see those permit fees come through, that's going to allow for what we'll ultimately need on the enforcement cycle. We, we have seen on, say on the party house and crime front, though the, there's a portal that will be opened and the police department can interface directly with that. I've talked to the chief about that. That's not going to, there's, there's not going to be a huge additional fee for the, the police department to immediately be able to put into the Building Division, hey, we've been to this short-term rental several times this month and it's a, it's a problem. And then the Building Division will be able to, to act accordingly.
But yes, in your, in your earlier statement was that board, the fees from Board Bills 33 and 34 should fund the regulation from Board Bills 33 and 34, but we don't know what those are going to be. We haven't collected them yet. Is that correct?
That, that is correct. They have not been collected yet because the, the regulation is not effective yet.
So the regulations, those fees and will be, started to be collected in November?
Yes. When, when that ordinance becomes effective, then those fees will become effective as well.
That, this is my understanding as well. One of the things I have a real frustration about is that we don't have any idea of what the fees will be collected because we don't have a good firm understanding of how many Airbnbs are out there. I just took a look and reminded myself as we were talking through the budget this year, there are no provision for additional staff to the Building Division to regulate this industry. The pretty big responsibility for the Building Division, which is an entity which serves a very, very important role here, and in my estimation has always, always been understaffed. We have never properly staffed or funded the Building Division. They have over 200 employees and one deputy director. Their leadership level is very lean. The, the division itself is extremely lean and we are not doing our job as a city inspecting buildings, providing a level of public safety. I have had two buildings collapse in the last month, several weeks, you know, and we're a reactive Building Division as a result of not having a proactive and properly funded Building Division. One of the things that was really frustrating for me about Board Bills 33, 34 was that we were hoping that the fees and fines should, should fund it, but we didn't provide the Building Division with the funding they needed on the forefront of that legislation to buy, to, to buy the software, to invest in those things and to invest in staff. So looking at our budget right now, our staffing levels for the Building Division isn't really set to change particularly in the Department of Inspections or the, the segment of the Building Division, the staffing, which would oversee this regulation from the beginning. One of the things that's really concerning to me is that this bill, while I do think we need to be- while I do think we need to be overseeing, regulating, and potentially taxing the short term rental industry in some meaningful capacity, as you've pointed out in committee and throughout this process, we would not be alone. We would be joining other cities in this work. But if we're not funding the oversight, if we're short, if we're shortchanging the Building Division on an annual basis in a general way, and we are looking right now at a tax, a tax base, a city that is shrinking, we are losing population faster than we have lost population since most of us, all of us down here, with the exception of Joe, sorry, Joe, have been alive. We are really, you know, he's paying attention, I promise, I know he is. You know, he's too old to worry about it. You know, I, I guess I, with the earnings tax lawsuit, you know, the potential budget hole of $26 million that we carved out, we don't know if that's adequate. With the population loss, losing our tax base, creating more and more vacancy. Every person that leaves our city is creating a vacant housing unit. And I don't disagree that we need to be focused on making affordable housing, but we just also made unprecedented and historic investments in the affordable housing community. Just yesterday, we awarded $3.2 million out of CDA. We have fully funded the Affordable Housing Commission, overfunded it the last couple of years in a way that I think we, you know, can all feel proud of. But nonetheless, we need to be looking at metrics and making sure that we're making those investments in, in the most effective ways, in the most productive ways, in a ways that stim, that stim the population loss in particularly in North St. Louis, where we're seeing the vast majority of it coming from. One, I just, I think right now, if we're going to be imposing taxes on our citizens or potentially asking them to tax certain entities or, or impose user fees, as you pointed out, this is still coming in, it would come into the city of St. Louis. And until we wrap our head around the revenue loss as a result of this earnings tax lawsuit, until we wrap our heads around the revenue loss because of historic levels of population loss, until we understand what the exodus of businesses coming out of downtown is gonna do to our revenues, I think we should be really cautious about how we're allocating funds and how we're, how, where we're mandating that they go to. Because we have very, very limited ways in which to tax our residents, our visitors, or impose user fees. This is one way we can do that. And I think as we are wrapping our head around, our collective heads around these massive budget shortfalls, holes, and shortcomings, and we are failing to do, by the way, basic city services, I would argue that our Building Division, as it's currently funded, isn't able to perform the inspections that we need to perform to keep our residents safe. That we should be considering this as a mechanism to do those basic functions. And with that, I, I would, I'm asking for a pause. I can't, I, while I support the intent, while I support the concept, and I, and I certainly commend the work that you've done, Alderman, and, and the committee, the HUDs Committee, holding several hearings, chair being very accommodating on that. At this time, I can't support this measure. And I would ask my colleagues to really consider this as one of the very few mechanisms through which we can generate some funds. I think that we should really take a look at what we're able to generate all the fees and fines out of 33 and 34 and demand that those bills become inactive as soon as possible. Unfortunately, it's almost impossible to do that because we've given the Building Division, we've, we've really shortchanged the Building Division on the tools they need to even put those bills, those existing regulations into place. I would like to see how those plan out, play out. I would like to make sure that the Building Division has the tool to, to make sure that those are, you know, that we, we can do the job the Building Division, that we've asked the Building Division to do before taking funds that come in from a regulation on, on something that they are overseeing and providing it to other departments. That's all I have, thank you, Madam President, and my colleagues.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the seventh, are you wanting to speak? Okay, just saw you pop up. A further discussion, seeing none. Alderman from the fourth, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to be clear, I don't disagree with a lot of the things that my colleague from the eighth ward said. We, we, there are many city departments that we've underfunded for quite some time. And there's, I mean, you don't have to go further than the city's website to see hundreds and hundreds of, of jobs that are unfilled. And it's, it's really hard to be successful on any team when you're, when you're playing with, with, with half the, the guys you're supposed to be playing with. I think it's a part of a much larger conversation. And, you know, I've been one of the fiercest advocates for paying people more money, which is what we need if we're, we're ultimately going to, going to fill those positions and get the things that we need done, done throughout the city, whether it's trash, whether it's streets, whether it's, you know, the police, on and on down the line, to Building Division, NIS, so on and so forth. But ultimately, this is about the regulation and taxation of an industry. We regulated it. We, we did so with 33 and 34 last session. We had a lot of input on 33 and 34 to come up with those regulations. And this session, we're looking to, to tax that industry. And this is a rate lower than we tax hotels. Why are we allowing any industry to come in and just not pay taxes? I mean, the, the, they're a business and they're just not paying taxes. And we can have discussions about where these funds should go, and, and we did. We had several committee hearings about it. We, we heard from the, the community about it. We talked to, you know, any, anyone who wanted to weigh in. You know, we, we had a lot of written testimony that, that I, I certainly went through. But at the end of the day, as, as I noted at the beginning, there is a, a correlation between the proliferation of short term rentals in every city, not just this city, and then a, an increase in rents and mortgage prices that are simply pricing people out of the housing market. And we need to address that or else, you know, one of the complaints that I know that we all get is that people are, are seeing more and more homeless people on our streets. And that's, that's an issue everywhere. And this is a way to begin to address that issue. And like I said, this is not a silver bullet, this is a, a drop in the bucket to try to get more into, A, build more affordable housing in our city, and B, to stop people from losing shelter in the first place. And that's, that's the biggest way to stop the, the crisis that we're in nationwide is to prevent people from ever losing shelter in the first place. That's what this seeks to do. And with that, I ask for your favor.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the fourth, seconded by the Alderwoman from the first, that we perfect Board Bill Number 41, committee substitute. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Aldenberg, Alderman Con, Alderman Orion, Alderman Varmer, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sanye.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Aldenberg. Alderman Con. Alderman Varmer. 12 aye votes, one no vote, and one abstain.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderman from the fourth to perfect Board Bill Number 41, committee substitute.
Board Bill 11, committee sub, as amended, sponsored by Alderwoman Sanye, President Green, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Keys, Alderman Aldridge, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderman Orion. An ordinance that amends, that amends Title 16 of the City of St. Louis Revised Code of Ordinances to add a chapter setting forth regulations for attorneys who access and enter city correctional and detention facilities when visiting with persons who are detained therein containing the severability and an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the seventh, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 11, committee substitute.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move to perfect Board Bill 11, committee sub, amended.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the seventh, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, perfect Board Bill 11, committee.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. This bill was something that was filed at the beginning of session. And I think the issues and things going on within our city correctional facilities have been well documented. Any of my colleagues who serve on the Public Safety Committee, we've had a lot of conversation. We've received a lot of public comment about things over time. One of the most recent incidents that happened is we had attorneys report that they've been unable to do their just due in representing their clients. They've stated that they've had, they've been turned away when they've shown up to visit. It's very public out there that there was a policy that said that they could not bring any electronic devices, including their cell phones, their laptops, tablets, other things that are really essential to them talking to their clients, and also the ability to pass papers. This incident got so, you know, escalated to a point where Judge Elizabeth Hogan actually issued an order and said, hey, you cannot do this. This is interrupting justice and you need to allow attorneys to access their clients and you need to allow them to use the electronic devices and other things that they need. And we had our first hearing on this bill, because we did have two. We had several attorneys show up and talk about what a struggle they've had in accessing their attorneys and quite frankly, things that are arguably unconstitutional. Some of those attorneys include Sue McGrath from the Sue Law Clinic, Matthew Mahaffey and Erica from the Public, Erica Wurst from the Public Defender's Office. And other private defense attorneys came and spoke at length about the challenges that they faced with this issue. I have had the opportunity to have conversations with the administration and we've talked about the implementation of what something like this would look like. And it is at a point where we think it would work. What I think is really important for both myself and my colleagues to remember, something that Matthew Mahaffey pointed out when he came, is that the inability for attorneys to access their clients within our facilities in addition to being unconstitutional is an obstruction and in some ways a denial of justice. Not only are people inside of the facilities eagerly awaiting to have their day in court and to talk to their attorney, but our, our constituents and our residents on our communities who re-represent, many of them are waiting on the outcomes of these cases. And so when you have cases where attorneys are showing up, a public attorneys who are receiving public dollars and they have to wait for hours in the lobby before they can see their attorney, that's a big problem. But you're also having not just the detainees, that's often the, the focus as it should be, but you also have victims of crimes in our communities that are waiting and who are being delayed when this happens. And so this bill doesn't do anything crazy. Honestly, I think it's, what is a little crazy about this is the fact that we have to legislate it, that we have to legislate that constitutional rights are given, that we have to legislate that these basic practices of allowing electronic devices, of allowing attorneys to pass papers to their customers, of like specifying the visiting hours is what is a bit ironic about this. But this bill allows us to do something that is much needed. It, it allows us the opportunity to have clear policies and have clear practices and to have clear expectations so that all of the stakeholders, whether you're an attorney, a detainee, a family member, for all of us to understand how this process should work, it gives us the opportunity to get on the same page as that. And again, I would just iterate kind of over and over again, what attorney said is that attorneys and state representatives, people who go all across our region to different courtrooms and different facilities said that the barriers and the struggles that they are encountering when they're trying to get access to the facilities within our city are really extremely abnormal. Thank you.
A further discussion, I'll. Fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to commend the, the sponsor on her, her work on this. As we discussed this several months ago, I know that the hope of many of us was that we were going to be able to avoid having to pass a board bill and an ordinance here and that the, the CJC would come into line with the, what, what's pretty clearly laid out by the Department of Justice when it comes to attorney access to, to defendants. I, I think that attorney's right to access defendants, particularly pre-trial, where you, you have an innocent person by, by our law, is, is really important. And it's one of the things that, that separates us from places that I, I don't want to live. And I know that Alderwoman Sanye's bill pretty closely lines up with Judge Hogan's order. I was talking to a colleague of mine yesterday and he noted that he had talked to Judge Hogan about that order. And where Judge Hogan did the research on that, it comes directly from a 30 some odd page memo from the Department of Justice in 2023 about this exact issue. I, I know that, you know, cell phones have been a controversial thing in the facility, but I, I know both from personal experience and talking to colleagues that even since I became a member of the bar, the, the way that attorneys do things has completely changed from a briefcase full of paper files to now basically you, you, you live and die with what's on your phone. That's where you, you, you can pull up your, your motions, your briefs. I think it's also important, particularly in criminal matters, there's oftentimes things like video, which are hard to, hard to show someone on, on paper. And if, if an attorney can't bring their phone in and show a defendant the evidence that the state has against them, that's deeply problematic. And I, I, I initially was very hesitant on, on this, but I think it's absolutely necessary and I, I would encourage you all to vote in support of this. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderman from the fourth would yield?
The Alderman from the fourth yields, questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th.
I will.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Alderman, have you done criminal law before?
I have.
Okay. And so have you had to go into the workhouse or the city jails?
Absolutely.
Because I'm listening to this and this is just like blowing my mind that we're doing this because this is repetitive and we don't have to pass laws that are already our right. When I heard the Alderwoman from the seventh talk about she talked to the administration, let me see if I get that right. The administration appoints the Public Safety Director, one of 14 appointments that the administration gets.
Yes, ma'am.
Two of them areas, correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And the Public Safety Director is over the police, the fire, oh, but also the correction facilities, that's all under the Public Safety person, is that right?
Yes, ma'am.
So if they're breaking the law, shouldn't it just take a telephone call to say, stop that, from your boss?
Well, in the past, I guess, that has not been successful. Even after Judge Hogan's order, there was still instances of non-compliance with that order. One of the things that this board bill does, and you know, it's, in my mind, a real shame that we, we're even here discussing this, but one of the things that it does is it imposes a penalty for non-compliance with this and attorneys' fees. So, because one of the things that, that we're going to run into if we don't allow meaningful access to their clients by attorneys is these cases are gonna get dismissed. We're gonna have problematic actors on our streets as a direct result of, of, of bad policy upfront.
I'm not opposed to attorneys being, having access. I was one of those attorneys for many years. In fact, my first case I ever got nolli processed by Hal Goldstein, over who's now fed, is that I took my phone, because we didn't have cell phones then, I took my phone from my kitchen into the workhouse, into a little attorney cubicle, and then had him, we called up Hal. And Hal got to hear this person who had been falsely accused. And by the time I got back down from the workhouse to downtown, he had nolli processed the case. Because when we got the 911 tape, instead of him being the person who committed the crime, he was the person who had called it in and he had been falsely identified. And I still have that little 911 tape, I keep it with me because when I first picked him up behind the division where they assigned public defenders, I kind of didn't believe him, you know? And I said, oh, okay, this lady saw you, whatever. And he kept saying, I didn't do that. And he kept saying, I didn't do that, Ms. Ty, as I called, but when I got the 911 tape. But there, the things that I hear now, I never had any problem taking anything I needed as an attorney. Of course, I'm not trying to take a gun or anything, but any other tools that I needed to take in to talk to my client, or even when I needed to see my client at irregular times, I could call somebody, that would get done. So when I hear this, and I hear you saying there will be penalties, first of all, there should be a penalty because when your boss tells you to do something, you don't do it. Step one, now I'm verbally going to counsel you. Step two, now I'm going to write you up, and it's called progressive discipline in which you won't have a job. That's a penalty that we're facing right now, and the director can do that. And I'm just saying, we're doing to me repetitive stuff. I'm not opposed to it, it's just ridiculous to me. The other thing I need, I have a question is, is the judge gave an order, did she give some kind of injunction or did she just write something out? Is there an injunction preventing them?
The sponsor may be able to speak more on whether or not there's an injunction. I've gone through that order, but since I don't do criminal law anymore and I don't have any clients in the Justice Center, it's not something that really applied to me. But I can say that talking to colleagues, this is not a solution in search of a problem. This is something where attorneys are being denied access to their clients, and to the point where a judge has issued an order on this.
And I'm actually going to look at the order because I'm just saying that there is two things a judge can do. They can give you an injunction prohibiting it. They can also do a writ of mandamus compelling you to do your job, okay? Both of those things, it's just, and again, I'm not going to be opposed to this, but when I saw this, I'm like, why doesn't the public defender file a lawsuit then against the city of St. Louis?
I think when we talked to Mr. Mahaffey and Ms. Wurst from the Public Defender's Office, it's their hope that we could ultimately first just get a policy that made sense, and absent that, then a, you know, an ordinance. But all of this is already laid out in Gideon v. Wainwright, which is an attorney's right to access their client and a criminal defendant's right to have an attorney.
And that's, I agree.
But I think there's, I think there's a real disconnect in between kind of the ivory tower of what the Supreme Court says and what happens at the street level sometimes, and what we have here is now an ability for an attorney who has denied access to their client to bring an action and get a, to find the individual who has denied them access.
So, and I haven't done criminal law for a long time either, but do still remember some of the stuff. My first question becomes, if you don't listen to a judge who tells you what you're supposed to do, I don't see you listening to an ordinance either, okay? But also that I know that they have duty judges that you can get all times of the day and night, that you can go to, to compel people to do things. As I said before, this is repetitive. Maybe there's something not repetitive about family members and stuff having access, but, or members who belong to certain of our boards and commissions, but for attorneys to be denied, and there are already some fees and penalties for that if you do that, okay? And they have to go to court, and they will win, and the city will be paying out damages. And so did we inquire of our city counselor at all, if you know, about an opinion about what was going on, and did we get one?
Yeah, so, and again, the sponsor's probably in a better position to answer the hyper specifics there, but I can say that this bill came about as, after many months of conversations with all interested parties, and then a continued inability or unwillingness to comply with the norms that we see all of our neighbors able to comply with. I think it should be noted that the testimony that we heard and then from conversations that I've had with former colleagues, they do not run into these issues in St. Louis County, St. Charles County, even in, you know, very rural Missouri. They're not running into these issues. They're not running into them on the other side of the river. It's unique to the city of St. Louis, and it's recent.
So, the person who we think is responsible for not allowing people to enter, were those people brought before the committee at any time, and were they able to explain their actions?
My understanding is that the sponsor reached out several times to try and line up these, and they did not want to or could not appear before the committee.
And this is what we have subpoenas for, for our committees. This is exactly when you need to use them, okay? Because they have no right to refuse to come before the board, which is a legislative body equal to the executive and the judicial, and to answer questions that are very pertinent. So I don't want to, should not be, that's something we're not using our powers, I would say.
I will say on that front, though, this board bill did come about after collaboration with the administration. This isn't completely adverse. This is, there was collaboration from the administration on this.
However, if we're passing something that's saying an individual is not doing their job, because that's what we're saying, they're not doing their job. And we have not gone through the steps of making the direct, the mayor will appoint the Director of Public Safety, who then is in charge of, which, by the way, I have written to the mayor since she first got here and to Dan Isom about that public safety need to be split up. It is too large. You talk about something that's too large, and I actually, and I'll share with you, wrote a thing in which Dan Isom loved, the former Public Safety Director, saying, why don't we split some of it from police, fire, and some other things over here, and put building division and some other things over here and have two divisions? Because it's too large. But being that it is what it is, there ought to be a phone call. And any individual that did not do it, the first time I tell you, and I'm the Public Safety Director, get a verbal command. The second time I tell you, it's a written command. The third time, you better call your lawyer because we're doing progressive discipline, and we're going to terminate you for not doing your job, okay? And then you say you don't want to come, and then we say, okay. And I don't say that's adversarial to the administration if we send subpoenas. I say that's what we do, you and I do routinely. I've been issuing subpoenas since I first became attorney in 1989, 88, 89, okay? So that's a routine that you do so that people don't think that they've been invited, they've been commanded to come someplace and to answer questions. And that's a right that we have at the Board of Aldermen. So I want to say just shame on us because if we're working with somebody, but they're still not coming to answer the questions, that's to me, we're not doing our job. And this ordinance is not going, if you don't listen to the rights of an attorney from case law to judges to even the Constitution, I don't see you doing any difference with this ordinance.
I think that what this ordinance addresses, that the case law and other things don't, this is a fine on the individual. So if you're not doing what you're supposed to under the Constitution, city of St. Louis isn't paying this fine, you are. And I think that that's an important distinction.
I understand, but I'm saying that in some cases, the courts have made people who didn't do things pay it from their pocket. And I think this is egregious and would come up to that standard. As I said, I don't, I'm not opposed to this, but something is not right here that we're
I couldn't agree with you more.
All right, thank you very much.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the?
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I think the Alderwoman from the 12th made some really good points, and this is crazy that we even have to be doing this kind of legislation. I think she had a lot of good questions that I think is important to this legislation. So I wanted to inquire of the Alderwoman from the 7th.
Alderwoman from the 7th, would you yield to questioning from the Alderman from the 12th?
Yes.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Could you answer some of those questions that the Alderwoman brought up when it pertains to the legislation and the process and the thought and everything behind this legislation, and why you're doing it as an ordinance? As she stated, it's already kind of an attorney's right.
Firstly, I would say I don't disagree with anything that the Alderwoman from the 12th said. As you know, Alderman Aldrich, we filed these bills at the beginning of this session, and like Chair Norrion said, I really had hoped, you know, we had several conversations, myself and Chair Norrion, where I said, you know, I really think it's ridiculous we have to do this as an ordinance. I was actually hoping if we give it a little time, that they will, you know, work it out, especially when I learned that the judge was going to give an order. I thought, okay, for sure, this will help address it. But then continuously, there is complaint after complaint. You know, from my perspective, and I think from a lot of other perspectives, I think what's happening is pretty clear, that there are some instances where detainees are being harmed or being neglected in some type of way, photos are leaking, and then this department head or that department head are putting policies in place that rather than address, you know, the conditions and treatment being given within a facility, are attempting to allow less of that to get out by saying attorneys can no longer bring their phones and bring their laptops. And so I think once it just got to that point where eventually I just felt like, well, it just, even though I don't want to do this, it doesn't seem like there's any other way to recourse. And I do feel like there's a responsibility to do anything that we can and to get the conversation moving and going. And so that's why we proceeded on going ahead and calling the hearing in specific references to concerns about enforcement and how this will go. There are things in the bill that, you know, aren't there right now, something I think is really important to note, in addition to like Alderman Norrion said about the penalties and the fees on the individual who would be obstructing attorneys from having access. It also does say that the ordinance has to be posted at a conspicuous location within the facility, so people should know that there's access. And then it also creates a new public process for accountability. And so now, anytime that access is denied, that you have, you have, the Commissioner or the Sheriff or whoever is the now party would have to put in writing that they did the denial and put in writing why, and then all of that is sunshinable. In addition, specifically, I know Alderwoman Ty also asked about if Judge Hogan, was there an injunction or not? It was not an injunction. Judge Hogan called it an administrative order. She directed it directly to Commissioner Abdullah and Sheriff Vernon Betts. And so it wasn't injunction, it was an order. But again, I would just say, I do agree with many of her things. I think I would urge myself and all of my colleagues to think about whatever it is that we can do and whatever that looks like to hold us accountable. But I do think this ordinance, not only does it clarify what the expectations are and what the policy should be, but it also does provide some additional means for accountability and for tracking and for the public to know when denial is given and why and so forth and things like that. So there's several things that I think this bill will help to address, and every, I think there was at least seven attorneys, maybe nine by the time we got finished, that came and testified and spoke to a desire for this ordinance and a hope that it would help us to get where we should be.
Yeah. Well, thank you for that. And I do also remember several of the attorneys that came, and I think the, I want to call President, a chair of like the Public Defenders and several Public Defenders that came and supported this and talked about their lack of access as attorneys to be able to get in and being able to see their clients and other things like that. So I think the Alderwoman from 12 had some really good questions. I think you answered that, and I just want to give you that opportunity on record to be able to address some of those questions. So thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 7th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Again, I would just reiterate that this ordinance is one that I wish that we didn't have to do, but since we're here and we do have the opportunity to make sure that processes are given and to hopefully eliminate some barriers from justice being given to victims awaiting that within our communities, we have the chance to take it. And with that, I would renew my motion.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 7th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 11 Committee Substitute as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer, Alderman Aldenberg, Alderman Con, Alderman Norrion, Alderman Ballmer, Alderwoman Velazquez, Alderwoman Sonier, Alderwoman Spencer, Alderman Browning, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Tyus, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderman Aldrich, President Green, Alderman Con, Alderman Ballmer, 15 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 7th to perfect Board Bill 11 Committee Substitute as amended.
Board Bill 12 Committee Sub as amended sponsored by Alderman Aldrich, President Green, Alderwoman Sonier, Alderman Norrion, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderwoman Velazquez. An ordinance that authorizes certain persons to access and enter city correctional and detention facilities for the purposes of oversight, transparency, and accountability. The ability to access city facilities that are maintained by the Division of Corrections is intended to be codified under Chapter 16.12 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis.
Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 12 Committee Substitute as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. I move to perfect Board Bill 12 Committee Substitute as amended.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 12 Committee Substitute as amended. Alderman, may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Board Bill 12 is a companion bill to Board Bill 11, very similar when it comes to access and transparency to our city jail. Just like the Alderwoman stated, you know, really didn't want to go this route of having to put it into ordinance, but I think sometimes we need to codify things in law to ensure that we as a city are following the law. So Board Bill 12 will give access to the President, to the Mayor, the Public Safety Director, and Board of Alderpeople to be able to access the jail. The original bill had said anytime with having conversations with people from the administration, we tightened the language that they would have access to the city jails between the hours of 7:00 a.m. and 8:00 p.m. at any time with no need of letting them know. I think there is an hour beforehand just to let the Commissioner know, but to be able to get access. Those individuals can bring up to four people with them. Those four people from those authorized individuals can be a prosecutor, a defense attorney, a clergy member, and also, I forgot to mention that the detention facility oversight board will have the ability to access the jail. There is also a penalty clause in there, it's very similar to Board Bill 11. If the access is not granted, there will be up to a $500 fine on the individual who do not give that access to the authorized individuals to ensure that this access actually happens. I think the issue of why we need to move on these pieces of legislation, you know, Public Safety Committee Chairman Norrion has really dived deep into the jail, and not to point fingers at anybody, but, you know, there has been a lot of things that have been going on at the jail during this new board, but even before this new board. And I think we as this Public Safety Committee has been taken it very serious of trying to figure out ways that we can ultimately help, not just the jail commissioner, but the administration to ensure that our inmates that are in jails are being treated humane. I've said it multiple times, you know, these individuals that are in our city jails have not even been convicted yet. While jail is not a place that should be a luxury, it also should not be a place that is inhumane. And I think this is another step that this Board of Aldermen can take to move forward to ensure that we have transparency, we have access. I know there's kind of an unwritten rule with Alderpeople in the past, even talking with the clerk, I know the Black Caucus have always went to the jail unannounced and was able to get access. I know during my time, I tried to go one time at the jail and didn't get access. So we just want to codify this into law to ensure that, again, that there's more transparency and accountability at our city jail, so that we can be a help at this board to ensure that less uprisings or less situations happen at our city jail. And with that, I would close and open up for any questions.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman from the 14th, you are recognized to close.
I'm sorry, I have my hand up, I'm sorry.
Right, Alderwoman from the 13th.
Yes, I don't have any questions, I just have a comment. And so Alderman from the 14th. And so Alderwoman Alderman from the 14th, you know, I appreciate you bringing this, but I guess my question is, why, you know, why do, it seems like this should, this should not be something that should be questioned, it should be an automatic, and as the uh previous Alderperson from the 18th stated. And I remember when Board of Aldermen just did a pop-up visit and went to the uh uh the jail. So do you, could you tell me, when did they stop, you know, letting?
Alderwoman from the 13th, are you wanting to inquire of the Aldermen from the 14th?
Yeah, I'm moving fast, yeah. So.
Alderman from the 14th, will you yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 13th?
Yes.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Okay, so when did this stop? Because I I'm just kind of concerned that all of a sudden it stopped.
Yeah. So like I say, this is uh, I know in my time of uh being on Public Safety, uh, one time when DFOB was going to do a tour, I tried to go over there uh with the Chair and the Vice Chair was turned around. And it it is one of those things that I would say has been probably unwritten rule where Alderpeople have had the access uh to go in. Uh, but I think it's important that we codify things into law, uh, because no matter if a new administration come in or a new Commissioner come in and don't want to abide by that unwritten rule, um, where Alderpeople have been able to do it in the past, uh, I think, you know, it's always good to just double down and codify it into law so that we don't have to uh with a change of administration or the same administration, want to change uh policies or change the unwritten rule of allowing all people to access the jail. So I wouldn't say it hasn't stopped, but it is nothing that is in our uh ordinance that actually is codified that allows us to go in.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 7th, did I see your hand up for a second there? No, okay. Uh, Alderman from the, oh, Alderwoman from the 11th?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I'd like to be added as a cosponsor, please.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderman, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Uh, I also want to thank uh Chairman Orion, uh, Public Safety Committee, and also all members, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, uh, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Velazquez, uh, for like I say, over the last two years when it comes to uh oversight at our jail and ensuring that we as a city are doing better when it comes to uh inmates in our city jail, that this committee uh has took it, like I say, very serious. We've worked on a legislation to clean up uh other ordinance that will uh help the jail. And I know we continue to uh dive in to try to ensure that our city jail is being ran in a way that is transparent and accountability. Uh, so I really want to give a a huge thank you to our uh Public Safety Committee for uh not just taking, oh, I forget, I could not forget my good friend Alderman Odenberg, who also sits on the Public Safety Committee as well. Um, the, like I say, diving into uh these claims and continuing to try to ensure that we're doing uh the best that we can from the Board of Aldermen. I think this is just another step forward when it comes to transparency and accountability in our city jails to make sure that we have one less deaths, one less death, one less uh riot. I also want to thank the administration for uh sitting down at the table, understanding that we took this serious and was going to move forward on it and gave some uh some language to just make it a little better. Thank you, and I close.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderwoman from the 7th, that we perfect Board Bill Number 12 Committee Substitute As Amended. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Board Bill 36 sponsored by Alderwoman Spencer, President Green, Alderman Aldrich, Alderwoman Keys, Alderwoman Sanier, Alderwoman Boyd, Alderwoman Clark Hubbard, and Alderwoman Velazquez. An ordinance repealing Chapter 11.28 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis pertaining to abortions by repealing Section 11.28.010 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis, Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, and 10 of Ordinance Number 56729, codified in Sections 11.28.010, 11.28.020, 11.28.030, 11.28.040, 11.28.050, 11.28.060, 11.28.070, 11.28.080, 11.28.090, and 11.28.100 of the Revised Code of the City Charter of St. Louis, Sections 1, 2, 3, 4, 5, 6, 7, 8, 10, 11, 12, 13, 14, and 15, Ordinance Number 56579.
Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized on the perfection of Board Bill 36.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we perfect Board Bill Number 36.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Aldermen from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill 36. Alderwoman, you may.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Bill Number 36 is an ordinance, as the Clerk read, uh, to repeal Chapter 11.28 of the Revised Code of the City of St. Louis. Um, this is an uh a chapter of our city code, uh, which is archaic, old, um, and really frankly, hasn't been in effect for a long time. It's pertaining to abortions in the City of St. Louis. It provides regulation um related to abortion clinics, abortion providers, um, and access to abortion med- necessary uh abortion medications in the City of St. Louis. I wanted to say on the forefront um that these ordinances, uh, while they've been on the books for many, many decades, um, have not actually been enforced by the City of St. Louis, but put the City of St. Louis in a very precarious, potentially legally uh dangerous position following what we all hope would be a successful passage of the statewide ballot initiative this November, restoring some semblance of 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 rights to women in the city, in the state of Missouri. Uh, so what we're doing here is repealing these archaic laws, which we should have done away with in our city a very, very long time ago, uh, but you know, putting in layering on top of um what is already regulated at the state of Missouri, um, access to abortions within the City of St. Louis. And with that, I'll take questions from uh my colleagues, but I ask for your favorable consideration as we do here at the Board of Aldermen, what we should have done decades ago in removing these old unnecessary uh laws from our cities' books.
Alderwoman from the 12th.
Madam, um, Madam President, members of the board, if the Alderwoman from the 8th would yield.
Alderwoman, could you speak into the mic a little bit more?
Um, okay, I've never had a problem. Okay, that's better. Um, if the Alderwoman from the 8th would yield.
The Alderwoman from the 8th yield to questioning from the Alderwoman from the 12th?
Absolutely.
Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you. Um, Alderwoman, the reason I ask for this to be taken off of the perfection consent calendar, because I think some things are so important that we should not just pass by them without letting the public know why there was the need to do it and what's going on. Because sometime when they're watching this, they don't know. They may have or may not have seen the committee hearing. So I wanted uh uh for you to just go into what it was and what um compelled you or made you decide at this point that we wanted to get rid of these ordinances, which as you correctly stated, has not been enforced, most of them are codes for a very long time.
Thank you, uh, Alderwoman. And I commend you and appreciate that you moved it from the consent calendar. That is a move I should have sponsored of the bill. I do think it warrants a little bit of discussion here. What provoked me to do this really, you know, we're looking at two years past Roe v. Wade here. And our state is one of the states that have taken action and and done an enormous amount of volunteer work collecting signatures to restore the rights of women and people who are experiencing pregnancy in the city of, in the state of Missouri. And as we look to the favorable passage of that enormous amount of work by volunteers and organizations throughout our state, having these bills, having these laws on our books, remaining there, directing the City of St. Louis and our Health Director to take actions that she shouldn't be doing, overseeing medical facilities in ways that we do not need to be doing here in the City of St., then yes, we haven't been doing them. But following the the hopeful passage of that statewide ballot initiative in November, having these on the books puts us in the position to be sued, to be forced in to regulating medical care facilities in ways that send us back into the dark ages. Unnecessary red tape, unnecessary oversight, and an unnecessary burden to access to medical health care. We do not need this in our city. We do not need these lingering, these these lingering laws passed before many of us, most of us were born, on our city's law books. And we need to get rid of them. Not only is it an insult to every human being alive in our city, but it is an insult to providers of medical care to even face the possibility of having to deal with these sets of regulations. And it also poses a real potential legal threat. It gives the tools to folks who don't want to see access to this kind of medical care in our city, the tools to take real action against the City of St. Louis. It puts us in a legally precarious position to leave these on our books. And for those reasons, I'm asking that we do away with this entire chapter of unnecessary regulation and rid our city of sexist and extremely archaic laws that don't have any business being part of our codebook.
Thank you. And if we can't get rid of these laws, then I think we need to pass some laws about some men and their way that they control their bodies too. I think they should be equally restrictive. If we don't get rid of restricting women's bodies, then we ought to pass laws that restrict men's bodies. And I got all kind of fun ways I could think of that, I won't say today. I thank you, I I appreciate you for answering the question.
Thank you. I'll I'll also just add, Madam President, just a few things here. Um, you know, there was some thoughtful consideration and questions from my colleagues about whether or not we should consider um having some of the regulations related to clinics, et cetera. I want to make sure that everybody in this room knows that regulating medical facilities happens at the state and federal level in a very reasonable way. The City of St. Louis doesn't regulate other medical facilities, nor should we. We're not equipped to do that. Our state handles that. There is no regulation when it comes to medical care facilities that the City of St. Louis can or should be putting in place on top of what the state of Missouri already does. I want to also say that there are some requirements on the books right now to these medical care facilities that go way above and beyond what any medical care facility should ever have to do. The penalty for violating that includes both fines and imprisonment of medical care It requires permits and applications and red tape that are beyond reasonable. It also puts in place real threats to those who are performing medical procedures in our city. And so for those, I just wanted to clarify, you know, in talking with our Health Director, we have not been following these, you know, we haven't been able to, we haven't needed to. And so removing these removes that legal threat, removes the potential for somebody forcing our hand and requiring us to do these things, and really just paves the way for our hopeful restoration of women's rights in the City of St. Louis once again.
Alderman from the 4th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I I think the the sponsor just kind of answered my question. I was going to ask if uh if there was a successful passage of the constitutional amendment, uh, if there was going to be a need to bring any regulations that were more up to date. But I think uh she just laid out that that the the state really is in charge of that regulation, that we wouldn't need to be doing any of that uh locally. Um, and since uh I've never been in possession of a woman's body, I uh try and steer clear of this issue. I I think it's uh something that's more up to uh to to folks that uh uh are are childbearing uh or have the potential to be childbearing. Uh, and with that, uh, please add me as a cosponsor.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 9th.
Uh, thank you. I also would like to be added as a cosponsor. I look forward to being able to overturn this archaic ban in November and really appreciate the work of all the organizations that have gone uh that they put into getting this on the ballot for us to be able to make decisions for ourselves, but especially for women to be able to make decisions for themselves. So uh, please add me as a cosponsor and happy to support this.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 14th.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to thank first the Alderwoman from the 12th for pulling this off. I was a little nervous when she did, uh, when the Alderwoman takes it off. I mean, you gotta, when you do things, you gotta be watching closely because you all know what's gonna go down. So I was, I was watching, but I appreciate her taking it off. And uh, want to thank the Alderwoman from the 8th Ward for uh filing this. You know, I think this is a a creative way um that we can be able to do stuff on the local level. So many times our hands are tied because Jefferson City continue to try to, and beyond now Jefferson City Supreme Court, uh, where we have to do ballot measures, but uh governments above us continue to try to uh control municipalities, not allow them to make their own decisions. I think this is again, uh, this is the second time you've kind of found a a way to be able to do something locally. I know with the gun bill, last session, you found a loophole uh to try to make it not as uh easy for people to acquire guns. And I think what you're doing here again is just another creative way that local government can be able to um, you know, not just stand in solidarity, but try to like take some of these bad ordinance off books to make sure that uh certain um individuals are being respected. And uh, I just appreciate you. And also like the Alderman from the 9th said, look forward to making sure the ballot measure in November uh get passed. So thank you for your leadership on this.
Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the 1st.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, please add me as a cosponsor, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderwoman from the 12th.
That was my request, thank you.
Madam Clerk, please make note of that. Alderman from the 14th.
I move that we embank Res- uh, Board Bill 36.
Second.
It's been moved by the Alderman from the 14th, seconded by the Alderman from the 3rd, that we embank uh Board Bill Number 36. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the 8th, you are recognized to close.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, excuse me. Uh, I want to thank my colleagues for standing in solidarity here. Um, as a, as a, as a, as a woman in this state, um, it it's enormously humbling to stand with um the 380,000 Missourians who signed this petition, uh, the volunteers uh who collected those signatures, and the organizations who helped fund and back um that massive, massive effort. Uh, we're not alone. Uh, we stand in solidarity with a ton of people from all over our state. Um, and I'm grateful that my colleagues agree um that we can move this ballot, this initiative forward here in anticipation of a positive ballot initiative. And with that, um, I ask for your uh favorable consideration as we perfect this board bill here today.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 8th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we perfect Board Bill 36. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
That's the extent of board bills for perfection.
Report of engrossment.
Board Bills 47, 50, 35, 38, 49, 29, 42, 45, and 1 is amended.
Third reading and final passage of board bills consent.
Board Bill 47, 50, 35, 38, 49, 29, and Board Bill 42.
Uh, Alderwoman from the 10th, you are recognized on the motion to uh adopt the third reading and final passage of board bills on the consent calendar.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adopt the third reading and finally pass it to Board Bill's consent calendar.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the 10th, seconded by the Alderman from the 14th, that we uh third read and finally pass the board bills on the consent calendars. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Odenberg.
Aye.
Alderman Con.
Aye.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd.
Aye.
Alderman Aldrich.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
15 aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the Alderwoman from the 10th.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderwoman from the tenth. Third reading and final passage of board bills.
Board Bill 45, sponsored by Alderwoman Switzer, and ordinance make an appropriation for payment of the operating expenses, capital expenses, including lease purchase agreement and debt service expenses for the parking division of the treasurer's office for fiscal year July 1st, 2024 through June 30th, 2025, in the sum of $20,436,391, including $2,151,000, I'm sorry, $150,310 for capital improvement containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the first, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill 45.
Thank you, Madam President. I move to third read and finally pass Board Bill 45.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 45. Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. As the clerk read in the summary, this is the budget of the parking division of the treasurer's office. The exhibits demonstrate where the money is being spent, where it's being collected, both in for the administration of the parking division as a whole and then individual parking garage as well. I'm happy to answer any questions. Thank you.
Need further discussion? Alderwoman from the twelve.
The treasurer that he promised two years ago, he lied about that. I'm not going to be voting for this bill. I'm gonna vote for present because I do appreciate that there are a lot of people work there and I want them to get paid and the treasurer's office to work correctly. But I also want elected officials to keep their word when they say they're going to do something, especially when you put it in writing. Now I'm going to be part of a lawsuit that will make sure that he gives me what I should have gotten in the first place. But just want to remind him, that's why you don't tell members of the Board of Aldermen you're gonna do something and then you don't do it because it will follow you forever. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Seeing none, Alderwoman from the first, you're recognized to close.
I renew my motion.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the first, seconded by the Alderman from the ninth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill 45. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con.
Switzer.
Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez. Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Present.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys.
Aye.
Alderwoman Tyus. Alderwoman Boyd.
Present.
Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green. Alderman Con. Eleven aye votes and three voted present.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderwoman from the first to third read and finally pass Board Bill 45.
Board Bill one as amended, sponsored by President Green and Alderwoman Spencer. An ordinance make an appropriation for payment of interest, expenses, and principal of the city's bond indebtedness, establishing city tax rates, and make an appropriation for current year expenses of the city government containing an emergency clause.
Alderwoman from the eighth, you are recognized on the third reading and final passage of Board Bill one as amended.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we pass Board Bill number one as amended.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill number one as amended. You may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President. Board Bill number one as amended is our city's budget. As you all know, and we have discussed several times down here, the Board of Aldermen has currently the authority to cut aspects of the city's budget. We are given the budget by the Board of VNA. This year, the Budget and Public Employees Committee held dozens and dozens and dozens of hearings throughout the months of June, May and June. We did an enormous body of work to consider the city's budget in all of its glory and shortcomings. You know, through that process, we identified and really had a lot of fruitful discussions about the departments that are frankly not funded in ways that, you know, in ideal ways. But the Budget Committee did make some meaningful changes to the committee. I want to thank the president of the Board and the Board of VNA for making sure, hearing those changes, considerations, and returning back some of the favorable adjustments to the city's budget, including an effort to fund additional staff for our Circuit Attorney's Office, additional half a million dollars for additional staff members to Gabe Gore's office for diversion capacity, as well as other professional capacity in the Circuit Attorney's Office, making some meaningful changes to our refuse department and the staffing there. And with that, culminating a large body of work, I could spend here another 20 or 30 minutes thanking everybody involved in that process, but I think instead I'll just ask for your favorable passage of Board Bill number one as amended.
Any further discussion? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I also want to thank the alderwoman from the eighth and the members of the committee for their work. I know that it's a, a, a lot of work going through the budget process. Like I was on the perfection vote, I'm gonna be a no, but that's not against any members of the Board of Aldermen or any of the committees. My no is to the underlying budget. I think it was a flawed document from the beginning. And as members of the Board of Aldermen, we don't have the ability to fix it the way that I would like to. But please don't mistake my, my no as condemnation of your work. It's, it's a garbage in, garbage out issue for me. Thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Alderwoman from the eighth, you're recognized, close.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I want to commend my colleague from the fourth. You're right. I mean, we have a lot of shortcomings. And I hated to point out, you know, some of those concerns in our discussion of one of your bills earlier today. I have a lot of concerns about the earnings tax, our population loss, and the future of being able to provide basic city services to the residents who pay our salaries, who entrust us to represent their best interests. And you're right, when we receive a budget document with thousands and thousands of pages and multiple forms, a line item detail, an operating plan, et cetera, et cetera, it's difficult to digest and it would be next to impossible to reorient the city's operating departments from within the Board of Aldermen, in particular, through the budget process. We're given just a month. We tried to start hearings earlier this year to better understand the shortcomings and shortfalls of our departments. Unfortunately, we're thwarted at that. Department heads were instructed not to come before the Budget Committee and have those discussions. So that was an unfortunate twist of our ability to have a deeper dive into the city's general function. But with that, you know, the Budget Committee, many members of whom are new to the Board of Aldermen, spent an awful lot of time, an enormous amount of time, getting to know the ins and outs of our city departments and the budgets and the funding streams that fund them. And I'm grateful for their, their commitment to that process, their commitment to engaging and asking thoughtful questions and having a real impact, not just in the fiscal end of it, but really just understanding how the city works. And I think we're all going to be better off as a legislative body because of the work of the Budget Committee members who really took the time to pay attention in those committee hearings, asked thoughtful questions, engaged in a meaningful way with the, with the city departments that run our city government.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? Seeing none, it's been moved by the alderwoman from the, oh, sorry.
Sorry. Thank you, Madam President. I just want to thank the alderwoman for the eighth for all the work put on the Budget Committee my first time serving. I do want to echo what the Alderman from the fourth said. I know that we couldn't address some of the bigger root issues, I think, that we saw on the budget. I will be voting for it as is. But as a body and as a city, I think we need to look at a number of those unfilled vacant positions and see how we can match that up with raising pay for workers across the board, across, not our board, but across the city. And that is a major reason for issues with recruitment and retention and that we should keep them. So, thank you.
Any further discussion? Any further discussion? It has been moved by the alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we third read and finally pass Board Bill one as amended. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion.
Nope.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
No.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Sanier. Alderwoman Keys.
We know.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. Eleven aye votes and three no votes.
By your vote, you have sustained the motion from the alderwoman from the eighth to third read and finally pass Board Bill one as amended. Report of the finally passed and signed by the president.
Board Bill 47, 50, 35, 38, 49, 29, 42, 45, and one as amended.
All other business being suspended, the president shall in open session affix her signature here to ten that these may become law. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 86 for.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 86.
Second.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we suspend the rules for the purposes of introducing Resolution 86. This is non-debatable motion. Madam Clerk, please call.
Alderwoman Switzer.
Aye.
Alderman Oldenburg. Alderman Con. Alderman Orion.
Aye.
Alderman Ballmer.
Aye.
Alderwoman Velazquez.
Aye.
Alderwoman Sanier.
Aye.
Alderwoman Spencer.
Aye.
Alderman Browning. Alderwoman Clark Hubbard.
Aye.
Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Tyus.
Aye.
Alderwoman Boyd. Alderman Aldridge.
Aye.
President Green.
Aye.
Alderman Con. Alderwoman Keys. Alderwoman Boyd. Twelve aye votes.
By your vote, you sustain the motion from the alderwoman from the tenth. If you could please place Resolution 86 at the end of the first reading of resolution.
So noted.
First reading of resolutions in reference to committees.
Resolution 79, sponsored by Alderwoman Boyd. Resolution authorizing the filing of a request with the Missouri Department of Natural Resources.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized on the first reading of Resolution 79.
Thank you, Madam President. I apologize because my computer is acting really kooky today, so I'm going in and out. So I'm asking for favorable consideration for Resolution number 79.
Would you like to request unanimous consent?
Yes, please.
Hearing no objection, Alderwoman, you may proceed.
Again, I would ask for unanimous consent for Resolution number 79.
Would you now like to make a motion to adopt Resolution 79?
Ah, yes, I would.
Is there a second? It's been moved by the alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the sixth, that we adopt Resolution number 79. Is there any discussion? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. With the alderwoman from the thirteenth yield.
The alderwoman from the thirteenth yield to questioning from the Alderman from the fourteenth.
Yes.
Alderman, you may proceed.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the committee. Alderwoman, and I gotta probably pull this up to see it. I'm also with a long day today, a little kooky. What is this, I guess, resolution requesting the Missouri Department of Natural Resources do?
It's requesting a grant that we'll receive to address the flood walls that we have to repair the flood walls within the city.
Okay. Are those flood walls, I guess, throughout, what, North St. Louis, South St. Louis, just throughout the whole city?
Yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Further discussion? Any further discussion? It's been moved by the alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the alderwoman from the sixth, that we adopt Resolution 79. All those favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Resolution 86, sponsored by Alderwoman Clark Hubbard. Section 108, law and agreement program.
Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on Resolution number 86.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we assign Resolution 86 to the HUD's committee.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the eighth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we send Resolution 86 to the HUD's committee. Any discussion?
It's not eighth.
Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of first reading of resolutions in reference to committee.
Second reading resolutions, committee report option.
Report from the Health and Human Development Committee, mayoral appointees to the River, the Great Rivers Greenway Metropolitan Park and Recreation, Brian Phillips, Emily Bernstein, and Lisa Suggs.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the Great Rivers Greenway Metropolitan Park and Recreation.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The Health Committee did vote out those appointments, and we intensively interviewed those people in regards to the mayor's appointment, and I ask for consideration to accept that, those appointments.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, we approve Mayor Jones' appointments to the Great Rivers Greenway Metropolitan Park and Recreation. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
Mayoral appointees to the Mental Health Board, Dr. Ronald Griffin.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth, you are recognized on Mayor Jones' appointments to the Mental Health Board.
Again, I want to thank the representative came for the Mental Health Board, and the Health Department went in real deep discussion in regard to how it's impacting our community and how the Mental Health Board can improve the work that they're doing. And so again, I ask for considerable consideration for the appointment for the Mental Health Board.
It's been moved by the alderwoman from the thirteenth, seconded by the Alderman from the fourteenth, that we approve Mayor Jones' appointments to the Mental Health Board. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries.
That's the extent of second reading of resolutions, committee reports and adoption.
Miscellaneous and unfinished business.
We have none.
We can dispense with line item 23. We can dispense with line item twenty-three. Announcements.
Tuesday, July second, twenty twenty-four, HUDs will have a committee hearing in the Kennedy Room at nine a.m. Thursday, July fourth, and Friday, July fifth. The office will be closed in honor of Fourth of July holiday. That's the extent of the announcements.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Just because I know that we're all going to, uh, hear from, uh, folks since we don't have a meeting before, uh, the Fourth of July, uh, just a reminder to everyone out there, please don't be a dummy with alcohol, fireworks, or firearms on the Fourth of July. Now, uh, we've, we've, we've laid that out there, um, so, uh, please, please be a reasonable person. Thank you.
Any further announcement? Any further announcement? Alderwoman from the seventh.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I would echo what Alderman Orion said about, you know, the guns and the holidays, uh, coming up. I know, uh, for many of us Alders, I'm sure we're ready to get this little phone calls and emails that come with the holiday season, um, but whatever we can do to encourage folks to be reasonable and think about what their neighbors are experiencing. Um, and then secondly, my usual announcement, I think it came up as a topic today, um, around the unhoused. The Supreme Court did release a decision today that said that essentially it's okay to ban unhoused people from sleeping in public places. So I'm hoping that pretty soon we can have some legislation to help us to have places where unhoused folks can, can sleep, um, with groups over their head and get connected to resources, um, in all of the school of housing, of transitional, transitional housing and boarding homes and groups homes and all of that. So, um, if we have not met, if we have not talked yet, or even if we have met and there's some more folks that you want me to talk to, there's another space you want me to talk to, um, that door is open because those conversations will be coming back to us soon. So as much as we can get on the same page, anything I can do, um, with us getting on the same page to get something moving forward, uh, I'm happy to.
Madam Clerk, just, uh, informed me HUDs is at eleven a.m. on Tuesday, not nine a.m. That was in-
Correct.
Uh, Alderwoman from the twelfth.
Madam President, members of the board, first of all, I'd like to introduce, very special to me, I have a new, I have several people who are going to be my volunteer assistants. One of the first one is Ms. Beverly McLendon, who's going to be in the Ville, Grayville area, and I'd like to introduce her as my special guest. Um, I appreciate any time people will volunteer to do work. She's going to be out with community service and working with, um, and the second thing, the Alderwoman from the eleventh had to leave because she's getting a dumpster, uh, delivered, but this is her second year, I believe, that she's, uh, on a, uh, a goal to get rid of the tires that get dumped in people's alleys. So they're having a tire amnesty day for many, uh, uh, days, June twenty-ninth is the first one, July twenty-seventh, August thirty-first, September twenty-eighth, October twenty-sixth, and November thirtieth, and they have convenient drop-off locations, which are Grand and University, Grand and Carter, and Natural Bridge and Marcus, between nine a.m. and one p.m. The cost is free. They also give out free ga- gas cards as a gift. This is a way, instead of dumping tires in people's alleys, um, that you can get rid of your tires, and then they're taken away, and that doesn't cost the city, um, valuable resources, because right now we still don't have enough people picking up the trash and doing the thing. So I want to thank the Alderwoman from the eleventh. I do cooperate with her, and I don't, I donate gas cards because it is a very good thing, and I don't know if you don't have it in your alleys, you're very lucky, because in a lot of alleys in the city, um, people just dump the, the tires, and they're everywhere on lots, alleys, uh, sometimes on just the side of the road in a street. Um, and it's, uh, too bad that we don't do better, and we should be doing better to regulate the people who do use tires, because it's not fair to the community. So I want to thank the Alderwoman from the eleventh for her program.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the third.
Thank you, Madam President. Um, I would like to announce the Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting for next Tuesday. You can't hear me? All right. Uh, is that better? Okay. I, I would like to announce the Transportation and Commerce Committee meeting for next Tuesday. I think I heard that HUDs is at nine a.m. versus eleven a.m. It is at eleven?
It is at eleven. It was-
So I'll do TNC at nine a.m. On Tuesday, and we'll be taking up the appointments to the CVC and the Taxi Cab Commission, along with any board bills currently pending before the committee.
Any fir- oh, still going?
I just wanted to make sure that I gave you the clerk some time to take her notes, but, um, I also want to make sure that we acknowledge that this weekend is also Pride. Uh, Pride is, uh, you know, annual festival celebration, uh, and time to remember the solidarity and struggles within the LGBTQIA+ community. It is a very diverse community, and I, uh, for one, have been participating in Pride pretty much every year since I came out. In some form, fashion, or another, I was on the Pride Board, which is a all-volunteer organization, um, that every year reaches out to the community to, you know, get volunteers, to take, uh, leadership roles within the organization, to host this event every year. For those of you that haven't been before, it is a wonderful celebration of the diversity within the LGBTQ community. It's a time for us to also reflect. Pride came about because of the Stonewall riots in New York City at the Stonewall Inn back in nineteen sixty-nine, and that riot, as it was called at the time, the uprising at Stonewall, was predominantly led by, um, trans people of color and drag queens. And I've been in a lot of, uh, events this past month related to Pride. The Missouri History Museum opened up Gateway to Pride, um, which is an excellent exhibit for those of you that haven't been. I'm planning to go again and probably a few more times just to see it and take it in. It really walks through the collective history, both nationally and locally, of the Pride movement and, uh, you know, the struggle of the LGBTQIA+ community. But it was heartening to listen to the stories of our community here in St. Louis and the challenges that we continue to face and have faced for, you know, decades and decades and decades. And so, um, this is a moment for us to not only reflect but to celebrate those accomplishments that we've seen. But sometimes in this community, it doesn't feel like there are accomplishments. It's, it feels like there's, you know, one step forward, two steps back some days, and other days it's two steps forward and one step back in the journey. You know, the Supreme Court is rolling back, uh, regulations and laws that have stood in place for, you know, many years, if not decades. You know, we talked about abortion clinics earlier today. You know, Roe v. Wade was overturned a year ago or so. Roe v. Wade was founded on the premise of privacy rights. Those privacy rights had since, you know, been applied to the LGBTQ community. There was a time when same-sex adults having sex in the privacy of their own home could be arrested. Consensual sex and the privacy of their own home, they could have been arrested for underneath sodomy laws, which, by the way, Missouri still has on their books. That was overturned in, I believe, Lawrence v. Texas when I was twenty-six years old. I'm going, uh, to Pride this year to recognize those struggles and to be there in solidarity with the community. Usually, we have several hundreds of thousands of people that show up for this event. And it's heartening for me every year. I usually run into someone who is just coming out. Sometimes it's a young person, and sometimes it's someone who has lived their entire life not being able to be fully who they are. And I and many of these, uh, my colleagues here, talk about how St. Louis City loves LGBTQ community. We want to be there for them, and I think it's important that we do represent those values. And so I welcome anyone to participate in the parade with me this week, this weekend on Sunday, um, but the festival is all weekend long, and if you're not able to participate in the parade, I hope you're at least able to stop by the festival and enjoy and celebrate the community together. Thank you.
Alderwoman from the thirteenth.
Thank you, Madam President. I just wanted to, uh, publicly thank, uh, Melanie Woodward, because, uh, she has done something that I think a lot of people we haven't heard about in years. She is retiring from the city after forty-four years, and that's something you don't hear about like you used to. It, it was no big deal for people to work twenty, twenty-five years with a, a company. And so she has, uh, looked, survived and worked forty-four years. And so I want to applaud her, and I hope her the best in her retirement, and I look forward to seeing her in our community. Thank you.
Alderman from the ninth.
Uh, thank you. I just want to remind everybody that the Carter Commission is going to be having one of their final meetings, uh, on July first. This is a meeting where they're, uh, looking for public input on the recommendations that published about a week ago, uh, so, uh, I hope people can make it. It's at seven p.m. at the Julia Davis Public Library. That's four four one five Natural Bridge Avenue. Uh, also want to extend an invitation to people to come out to the Central West End Parade, uh, on July fourth. That'll be, uh, at three nine nine North Euclid. That's where we'll start. It's a short little parade, but it's very family-friendly. It's a lot of fun, um, and it's just great for the kids, so, uh, would love to see you all there. And finally, I just want to thank the Alderman from the third for his comments about Pride. I will be there as well for this, so, thank you so much.
Alderman from the fourteenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, tomorrow, myself and Fourteenth Ward Committee Woman, uh, Lucinda Frasier Bosley, we will be having a, uh, meet the candidates event for, uh, people in our, uh, neighborhood with, uh, for the August sixth ballot coming up. That will be from ten thirty to, uh, twelve at, uh, North Jefferson, fourteen, I think, twenty-one. It's a firehouse at North Jefferson, so I want the community all to come out to just be educated, uh, on what's going on for this upcoming election. Uh, also, as we are wrapping up, uh, the last few days of Pride Month, I want to wish everybody a happy Pride Month. I will also, uh, be there this Sunday. I know, uh, several other Alders will be there. Um, I think the Alderman from the third ward, uh, said enough about Pride. I won't go, um, down a, a road that I think he, uh, said it very perfectly, so there's nothing else I need to follow behind it. But I think it's always important also to give people their flowers, uh, before they leave. Uh, and I want to just, uh, thank the Alderman from the third ward, uh, for paving the way and, uh, showing, uh, people in the LGBTQIA+ community that representation matters, as being the first, uh, gay alderperson down at the Board of Aldermen. Uh, it means a lot. I know after openly gay alderperson down at the Board of Aldermen. I know we've had, uh, another former Alderman, Bill Stevens, who is openly out, and myself, who is, uh, openly out, which is not easy, especially as being a, a, a black man and fear of retaliation of what that looks like, as it's still a little bit taboo in the black community. I think we are, uh, we're getting better, but, you know, um, you have done something that allows for people to be, uh, to see themselves and understand that they can be in a position, uh, no matter if it's an Alderman, or if it's a doctor, whatever it is, that they can be who they want to be in an openly gay way. And, um, I want to thank you for your work at the Courts Building. If anybody has the opportunity to look at the Courts Building late at night, it lights up with rainbow colors, uh, and that was due to the Alderman's leadership, uh, back in two thousand and fourteen, when he was a little younger pup alder. But he, uh, worked to make sure that, again, uh, people can just see representation not only in, uh, people like Alderman Cohn, but in their city. Uh, so I want to thank you for your leadership and continuing to speak up and speak out, and thank you for allowing, uh, me to allow you to be my fairy godmother at this Board of Aldermen. So thank you, Alderman Cohn, for just being a, a great person, a good leader, and paving the way for so many, uh, people behind you that you know about and probably don't even know about. So thank you.
Alderwoman from the sixth.
Is this on? Guess it's on. Thank you. Um, it's hard to follow that. Uh, just want to make one announcement, uh, also Pride-related, as we both wind it down the month and, you know, I think want to remember that Pride is not just in June, but every month, but there is a People's Pride Saturday at six p.m., uh, and it's no Pride and genocide. It's going to be at South Grand and Arsenal. That's being, uh, put on by the solid, the Palestinian, Palestinian Solidarity Committee, uh, Tower Grove for Palestine, as well as several other organizations. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the tenth.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. Uh, on Saturday, in collaboration with Black Wall Street Three One Four and the Urban League Housing Division, there will be a Black Home Ownership Caravan and Resource Fair with the parade that starts at thirteen thirty. Arbert Avenue at eleven a.m. and culminates in the Black Wall Street Festival, uh, at one o'clock. There's going to be concerts, vendors, different ways to support businesses here in the city of St. Louis. If you've never been to a Black Wall Street Three One Four Festival, you're missing out. It's an amazing experience. The energy is amazing. Just think like Juneteenth after-party, right? So please, if you have an opportunity, make your way over, um, down in the historic Dustin Loop in the Thirteenth Ward. It starts in the Tenth Ward, ends in the Thirteenth Ward, and it's always a good time. Thank you.
Any further announcements? Alderman from the fourteenth.
Really quickly to follow up behind the Alderwoman from the, the Tenth Ward, at the Three One, or at the Three One Four Black Wall Street Festival, for the, uh, young people who know, there will also be Roscoe Dash and Travis Porter there. So you definitely gonna want, you're not gonna want to miss it, because it's, uh, it's gonna be a good turn-up. Uh, shout out to Farrakhan and so many others that is part of it, but it's definitely gonna be as a young, it's gonna be lit, so make sure y'all come out and have a good time.
Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the tenth.
Also on that lineup is Slow Spread Love. Shout out to my nephew, Slow Spread Love. He's gonna be on that lineup too, so I concur with Alderman from the fourteenth. It's gonna be lit.
Further announcements? Any further announcements? Alderwoman from the eighth.
Board, uh, to announce, uh, tonight is the new Gordon Rams Restaurant, um, in the fabulous Eighth Ward, in the old, um, in the, um, former, I should say, in the Four Seasons Restaurant at the very top. Um, it has spectacular, amazing views. Um, there was a unfortunate review in this morning's paper about that, but you know what? St. Louis gets to make its own decisions about St. Louis's restaurants, so come check it out. It's a beautiful place. It's a beautiful view of our beautiful city, and I'm gonna enjoy a drink and some, uh, some exciting and fabulous new food at this new restaurant in our great downtown area.
Any further announcements? Any further announcement?
I do want to make sure that I introduce formally Sam Woby, my, uh, who? Go ahead, stand up. Um, joining our team as the new Secretary of Communications, working with UCF. He'll be manning the door, um, so you won't have to wait so long or knock so loud to get somebody there. Um, so when you walk into our office, you will now see Sam's smiling face, um, so just wanted to introduce him and welcome him to our team, so.
With that, uh, Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to excuse.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. All members were present this morning.
Wonderful. Alderwoman from the tenth, you are recognized on the motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Madam President, members of the board. I move that we adjourn until Friday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, in the Board of Aldermen Chambers.
It's been moved by the Alderwoman from the tenth, seconded by the Alderman from the third, that we adjourn until Friday, July twelfth, twenty twenty-four, Board of Aldermen Chambers. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
No.
Motion carries. We are adjourned.